Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello.
Evening. Melissa, are we good?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay. All right, we're all here. Um, we'll go ahead and begin it. I'd like to, uh, call the San Bruno City Council meeting of September the 8th, 2022 order. And, uh, city clerk, would you be so kind as to take a roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar? Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Councilmember Mason, I see just joined.
Hi. Here.
Evening. Okay, if we can at this time, uh, please join the council and if we could rise and, uh, do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It seems that we do better as we go a little slower. Um, okay, let's move on to item number three. Comments for items on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed three minutes. It is the council's policy to refer matters related in this form to staff for investigation and our action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant state law. City clerk?
I see one hand up. Uh, hold on, it keeps going away. Um, Tim or Rena? I'm seeing the hand going up, so I'll, I'll allow you to talk because it may be an error. Just one moment. Hi, Tim or Rena, can you hear us?
Yes, this, this is Tim. Good evening.
Hi.
Evening.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, um, good evening, everybody. Um, I just want to, um, uh, give my support to, um, closure of San Mateo Ave- San Mateo Avenue for the businesses. Um, partial closure, um, to shutting down the, uh, avenue. So that, uh, businesses can thrive and residents and other visitors can enjoy what we have offer on San Mateo Avenue.
Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry, I apologize. That is on the agenda this evening under a common business item C. Uh, it'll be an informational update and we'll go over regarding that as well as, uh, the potential driver.
Okay. I apologize.
No, no worries.
We'll comment back, um, uh, when it comes time. Thank you.
You got it. Thank you. I wasn't on the internet.
Okay, um, one moment. I, I don't see any other hands raised, just kind of giving a second.
Okay, I'm not seeing any as well. We'll move back to panelists. And we're going to move on to announcements, presentations. Item A, September 9th, 2020 marks 10 years since the devastation in 2010 of the natural gas pipeline explosion in San Bruno's Crestmore neighborhood. In honor of the eight lives lost in this tragic event, we remember and honor their memory as the community continues to recover and demonstrates its resilience. Uh, as, as many folks know, um, with COVID, it certainly has changed everything. Uh, but also, we're not able to have any type of gathering, um, up at the site to, to mark this unfortunate, uh, day tomorrow. But what we are doing, and the fire chief will be, uh, showing the community, is a deos virtual tour that tells of the history. What has been found is, over the years, when that part was developed, it was to really kind of keep things on moving forward. But it's been acknowledged that sometimes we, uh, we need to know of the past, um, to never forget. Um, and to acknowledge what has transpired and how this, uh, community and this neighborhood, uh, and, and the residents moved forward. Um, after the fire chief is done, there are a couple informational items that I received as far as a couple of letters. I'll read one and I'll read a part of another. Um, so we'll finish up with that. Uh, but at this time, if I could ask our fire chief to, uh, please go ahead and walk us through.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, are you laying your fire chief? Um, I'm honored to be presenting tonight, uh, but it's also with a heavy heart that I speak with you tonight in regards to our presentation. Um, and the title of our presentation is 10 Years Later. And this title of the presentation is really to introduce a virtual exhibit to memorialize the 2010 gas pipeline explosion here in the city of San Bruno. And also provide you an introduction to the, to the, um, virtual tour. Give you, uh, some, uh, basic overview of it. And, and make sure that we, uh, memorialize some of the events of that day. And also make sure that we ensure that people that perished that day are not forgotten. And then provide an opportunity for some questions. All right, let's move along here. So 10 years later, this is a virtual exhibit. With COVID-19 happening, uh, we thought it was important to memorialize, uh, the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion. But also, uh, in, in light of COVID-19, make sure that we provided a safe environment for the public and allow them also the opportunity to explore and, um, do some research if they had it. Or if someone was, uh, privy to the incident and was there, uh, that day, had the opportunity to, uh, reflect back on that day and those that are lost and the impact on our community here in San Bruno. Um, this is a virtual exhibit. Again, it's a, it's a website with a, a, a co- uh, coalescing of a bunch of story maps, which are siloed to, um, reflect a bunch of information, um, that, uh, talks about the explosion itself. Uh, some of the aftermath of the explosion and recovery of the explosion as well. We want to, uh, begin, uh, by acknowledging that this virtual exhibit was printed by city staff. Um, and involved many of the departments within the city, including Public Works, City Net Services, our IT department, the city manager's office, the San Bruno Police Department, and the San Bruno Fire Department. This site, uh, will have an introduction by our mayor, uh, Mayor Rico Medina. It will, um, we also wanted to point out for this site, it's important to know that although the, the videos and pictures are not graphic, it has the opportunity to evoke some strong emotions in people. And we wanted to make sure that we recognize that and, and had a disclaimer so everybody would view it at their discretion, um, depending on their level of, um, uh, involvement in the event itself. The incident itself, uh, we, we do a highlight of the incident itself. We talked about the eight lives that were lost that day. The 38 homes that were destroyed and the other homes that were damaged. Uh, we provide a map so people have a, an understanding for people that didn't necessarily live in the neighborhood or maybe knew San Bruno, uh, could have an idea of some of the devastation that took place. So we, again, don't forget. There's also a documentary that was done shortly after the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion called Trial by Fire. There's a video of the trial by fire, um, um, documentary there. And also a, a gallery of photographs associated with the incident as well. As you move along in the virtual exhibit, there's a section that highlights the aftermath. And how Crestmore Canyon really, that the neighborhood has been changed, the city honestly has been changed forever. Uh, we often think of the pipeline explosion and the public safety response to that event as, um, uh, as what we kind of focus on, the, the lives that were lost also. But I want to also recognize the efforts, uh, the response and recovery that was done, not only by public safety people and folks at the city and the surrounding Bay Area, but also the city staff that, uh, really provided an invaluable service to the, the people that were affected by the pipeline explosion and also the families that perished. Um, many of our city staff provided, uh, who worked as liaisons to the family. And that's such an important component. Uh, we have the disaster portion of it, but the recovery honestly is, is a very important aspect of this, uh, event that we wanted to make sure we didn't, uh, be unrecognized. The virtual, uh, exhibit also goes over the trials, uh, a multitude of trials, including the NTSB, the federal trial, and the CPUC investigations, um, associated with the gas pipeline explosion. And also highlights the fact that city staff provided, uh, uh, assistance to outside legal teams and participated in that process. For many years past, the event itself. And that was an important component to make sure that the cities interested were protected and those citizens that we serve were protected, their interests moving forward. The next phase of the, um, virtual tour is part of the rebuilding. We talked extensively about the rebuilding of the Crestmore neighborhood. Um, the Crestmore neighborhood, for all intents and purposes, the infrastructure and many of the roadways and things were, were completely re- redone in the Crestmore neighborhood as part of that process of rebuilding. Uh, the development of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And you can delve in and explore throughout this, um, virtual tour about the San Bruno Community Foundation and all the, um, the, the effects that that community foundation had on the community and the ability to be able to provide some recovery for the community. And all the other, um, although this is a tragic event, those other positive things that the San Bruno Community Foundation was able to bring back to our community here in San Bruno. Uh, there's a highlight of the Earl Glenview Park and how that was developed. A combination of the top lot park that was there in, in the neighborhood and the donations of some of the lots that were affected from the explosion itself and how the Earl Glenview Park itself was, uh, created. Um, and then the ability to create a new, uh, recreation and aquatic center for the residents and visitors of the city of San Bruno. Um, there's some really extensive, uh, information in regards to that. And then Crestmore Canyon. Crestmore Canyon, as we know, uh, we highlighted recently with the fire department's work. Um, is a 76 acre open space area that we're doing quite a bit of, uh, extensive wildfire mitigation. And these are all, uh, I would say, effects of the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion. Um, for those that remember, PG&E was required to provide, uh, a significant amount of community, um, uh, volunteer hours to the city. Uh, those volunteer hours were not all 100% completed, so the city negotiated, uh, uh, a monetary settlement to be able to do a lot of this fire mitigation in Crestmore Canyon. So there's a, a extensive story map that was developed into the fire mitigation work that is being done in Crestmore Canyon. Um, and then just, uh, so everybody knows that the California Conservation Corps will be out tomorrow at their next second spike, um, Crestmore Canyon doing fire mitigation work, uh, tomorrow, uh, tomorrow morning. The next component is a media archive where we, uh, have basically a content locker for, uh, citizens and, uh, visitors to the site to be able to, uh, view, uh, some videos, uh, from the day of the event, some of the recovery, uh, videos and some of the documentaries that were done. But there's also an extensive, uh, photographic gallery of the event, um, itself. And the, the pictures that document, uh, some of the, the events that occurred. And then there's a, a very extensive newspaper gallery from, uh, various newspapers throughout the nation, uh, that, um, uh, documented some of the, the events that took place in regards to the San Bruno gas pipeline explosion. And, um, that, that is a very extensive library that will be able to add to that content, you know, as things progress and we move, move forward. And the last, uh, and most important, uh, component of the, uh, gas pipeline explosion, uh, virtual exhibit is to make sure that we have remembrance of those and make sure that they're not forgotten. Levon Bullis, Greg Bullis, William Bullis, James Franco, Jacqueline Gray, Janessa Gray, Jessica Morales, and Elizabeth Torres. So, um, for the council, I just wanted to say that I necessarily, as the fire chief wasn't working for the city of San Bruno back then, but I have a specific connection. I was there, uh, responding to that emergency. So, um, it, it, uh, I have a lot of those same feelings that many of you, although not nearly as strong as many that live in this community day to day, uh, have and the staff that, that, uh, was working on this project throughout the years. Um, but, uh, you know, I can understand, I don't completely, you know, feel like I, I know the complete depth of the, the feelings, but I can completely understand some of those things. And, uh, in speaking with many of the staff and, uh, and council members over the last few days, you know, uh, it evokes those types of emotions. So I just, uh, say that we, we try and document this stuff with the best of intentions to make sure that we never forget those that were lost and make sure that we try to help prevent this from happening in any other community, um, throughout the nation. But that, that's, uh, the end of my presentation.
Thank you, chief. And, uh, first and foremost, uh, want to thank Jennifer, John Hampton, and yourself and all the staff that, uh, put this together. And I think it's nice that it was done in-house because truly the, the spirit, um, and the respect that you all gave that, uh, are very much appreciated, um, to, to what occurred and to those, uh, lives that were lost. You know, um, we did, I did receive some phone calls over the weekend, you know, from Congresswoman's office, Assemblyman, uh, Jerry Hill's office. So Jerry Hill did, um, and for those of you know, um, very much has stood by San Bruno. And he, um, obviously he's turned out this November, but it was important for him. So, um, I have been asked if I would read it and I'll try to do his comments justice. "Dear Mayor Medina and honorable members of the Si- San Bruno City Council, I write on this date to mark the 10th anniversary of September 9th, 2010, gas pipeline explosion that took eight lives, injured others, and destroyed or damaged dozens of homes. San Bruno suffered a terrible tragedy at that time. We memorialize those who lost their lives. We share the grief reaped. And we honor the San Bruno community for courage in the aftermath of the disaster. The city of San Bruno is exemplary in pursuing the true cause of calamity and in seeking a just resolution insisting on fairness over expensory, truth over profits, and demanding that the responsible parties must assume appropriate liability. It was because San Bruno demanded honest answers that meaningful reforms have been established so that no other community will have to suffer as did San Bruno. The city of San Bruno is to be commended for the support that was provided to, from former Mayor Jim Wayne and former city manager Connie Jackson. The mayor and the city manager have the strength and the conviction of the city council and the entire community as they made the case to state and federal legislators, investigators, regulators, and in the courts. The state of California is more secure now with the laws enacted because of the San Bruno's insistence that public safety is a priority. It has been my honor to work with San Bruno to bring about new laws and safety regulations of public utilities." Something to be noted was we did receive a letter, mayor and the council, um, from PG&E that obviously acknowledges what transpired, the regret of the pain and the suffering that was caused to this community and what we endured. But there are a few things that have transpired over 10 years, and I'll just list a few. Completing the safety work set forth in the Pipeline Safety Enhancement Plan developed in the wake of the San Bruno tragedy, installing more than 361 remote controlled and automatic shut-off valves on transmission pipelines. If you remember this, what caused it, the flames to last so long. Replacing nearly 300 miles of gas transmission pipeline and over 863 miles of gas distribution pipeline. Establishing essential world-class training and safety centers, including a state-of-the-art gas control center, which provides 24-hour monitoring of the gas system. The centralized gas safety academy training center in winters. And the Center for Gas Safety and Innovation in Dublin. Completing 11 of the 12 National Transportation Safety Board NTSB recommendations. Work to be completed on the 12th and the final safety recommendations, which include strengthening, strengthening testing natural gas transformation lines is ongoing. So as we look back, um, I will tell you, I've reached and spoke to some of those family members who lost loved ones. Who still wear the emotional or the physical scars and pain today. today. One thing that I will say, from the time we had our first year remembrance at Skyline College, which was phenomenal to see the community rise up, stand together. Also, what little knew was after that was concluded, the neighborhood got together. And on their own doing, Sue Bullis facilitated it, and they made a heart of candles in the center of the street, lighting them and coming together as one. This isn't best, but this is a picture of it that I still have today that was taken from above by a fire truck. And it was truly the neighborhood reflecting, as they do, honoring and remembering. But what I'm most proud of is the staff that did a lot of heavy lifting. And you had retired staff, staff that had moved on to other agencies who came back because we needed all hands on deck. There are people who I was speaking to this weekend that have survived and have moved forward to the best of their ability. And some of them I had to say, "You're a miracle" because they've overcome the odds. And as a community, we did rally and we came together. So I want to thank the council of then, the council today, the staff of then, the staff today, and I want to just thank San Bruno for, this is truly, as was seen in the picture, a city with a heart. So with that, I once again want to thank Jennifer, because as you know, you don't like being in the center and you don't like taking any credit, but you were here then. And Mr. Hampton and both of you did a phenomenal job on this, so thank you. And we do have a member, I'm seeing somebody from the public, and so, City Clerk.
I'm Paul Wapinski. Hi, Paul, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I can't understand a word the mayor's saying, maybe he needs to reconnect, but like every word he says, it fades in and out. Maybe it's just me, but it's really hard to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Could have been, I don't know if it's my connection, but it's also, I paused a few moments or, anyway, it'll be my voice. Okay, we have somebody else? City Clerk, if you can bring them in?
Yes, Eisen. I'll let talk just one moment while I bring you in. Hi, Eisen, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you clearly.
Okay, great. Whenever you're ready. Eisen?
Yes, I started it. Is it starting?
I'm sorry, what is, what's starting?
The timing for the clock?
Yes, you can go ahead and start.
Yeah, I'm clicking on it and it's, okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Medina and fellow city council members. I am making this comment regarding the aquatic center that has been in motion. I am feeling that that is a really awful idea for San Bruno because we have the aquatic center in South San Francisco, Berlingame, San Mateo. What would benefit San Bruno is if we had something different instead of every single city having a swimming pool, aquatic center. And I think that we should, instead of having ice or water that we swim in, we should have a rink. And my idea is that we have a skating rink that would replace what we lost at Fashion Island in Foster City. We also need a replacement for Malibu Grand Prix so that we can have activities for families. And I think we could have someday something called the San Bruno Manatees, and it could be a hockey team, and they would have colors of purple, turquoise, and copper. And like the Mighty Ducks, instead of them, it would be the San Bruno Manatees, and one day they could maybe become San Jose Sharks. I think that we should think outside of the box, and if the attorney, the city attorney, would maybe make an amendment to the contract for this aquatic center contractor, perhaps they would be able to, instead of have a pool, we could have an ice rink where we would be able to have people from all over, not only San Mateo County, but across the Bay Area, coming to the city of San Bruno and giving business to our local restaurants because we already have enough aquatic pools. We could have something different where there's nothing, and there's no ice skating rink in all of San Mateo County, or batting cages, or the driving go-karts. And those were wonderful memories, and I miss that. And to be honest, I was even asking and trying to find out where is there a local batting cage? Perhaps that could be something that we can replace when we lost one in Redwood City. So I really feel that the aquatic center is a bad idea, and if you just make it an ice rink, it would be way better for San Bruno. And I swear, "I can visualize it all." It would be amazing to see our San Bruno kids skating around in these uniforms that I can just already picture. And instead of, you know, manatees being so peaceful and vegetarians, they would be fierce kids, slapping pucks like the Mighty Ducks, but they're the up-and-coming manatees that become Navy Sharks someday. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other speaker, City Clerk?
I see no other hands raised.
Thank you. Just on that last comment, the Community Foundation did do an outreach campaign to the community that spent quite a bit of time discussing about something. And that settlement that the city obtained from PG&E, it was to bring something to the community that, as the former mayor would say, something good has to come out of this. But it also was by outreach, operated through the Community Foundation and others going around the community, getting feedback, getting surveys, and getting information that was brought back forward to then the city council, who by a 4-1 vote decided to forward on the Recreation and Aquatic Center. So I just wanted to verify that, but I do appreciate your comments. With that, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item B. I know that's a hard transition from this, but we're going to move on to item B. It is not too late to submit your account for the 2020 census. The deadline for the census is September 30th of this month. And it is very important that our San Bruno community is accurately counted. Visit my2020census.gov, or you can call 844-330-2020 to be counted. Though as a reminder, we don't have a lot of time, but it is important that we all still do reach out and take care of that, please. Next, we have, we're going to be receiving an annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee, and I believe the chair.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Before we move on to that, on that last comment, do we know how San Bruno is doing with the census? I mean, is there, you know, competition never hurt anybody, right? To make sure our city is doing well. The last time I remember checking or being reported on, San Bruno didn't seem to be doing so well. So can we get a campaign, maybe everybody on social media just post, you know, a link to getting out there on the census and really pushing it because it's an important thing?
Yes, one that happens every 10 years, and I think, yes, we should. Those would wish and able to post would be great with that information because it's hard for everybody to write that down. Okay, let's go back to see the annual report from the Community Preparedness Committee, and I believe we have the chair, if they've been brought in.
Yes, I'm bringing Malcolm Robinson into the room. I will note, there are two Malcolm Robinsons listed in the attendees, so I'm going to gamble and bring in one of them.
Well, if it's not the right one, this person's going to have a hard act to take care of this.
Mr. Robinson, I'm trying to unmute you. Okay, I'll try the other one.
Okay, it's unmuted. There you are.
Yes, there you are.
Mr. Chair, welcome. Thank you. I want to thank mayor and city council for this opportunity to let you know what the Community Preparedness Committee has done the last year. It's going to be a very different presentation next year because this year is not quite the same. So this Zoom is a little different than the one we've been using, so I'm trying to share the presentation.
You should see a button at the bottom of your screen to share the screen.
Most of the time, it's rain color.
Okay, just make it bigger. Okay, there we go, share screen?
Yes.
Share, okay. We used to call this disabling technology because sometimes it doesn't work as advertised. Okay, there we go. Okay, this is year 2019. We had a full committee last year. There we go. The mission of the San Bernardino Community Preparedness Committee, we are an all-volunteer group, and we're, you know, engaged in promoting emergency preparedness and planning and education to prepare residents to mitigate the potential consequences of natural and man-made disasters. Last year, George Paponas, a longtime member of the committee, was the chair. As the vice chair, Janet Lutis, Ron, who have been on the committee for a long time. Both are, I think, three out of four of us are ham radio operators. We lost Tricia Howard, she moved out of San Bruno, and we're looking for a replacement for her. Laura Davis was our city liaison. This year, I'm the chair and Janet's the vice chair, and we still have the open position, so please, if you're out there and you're interested in community preparedness, or you're a fireman or a policeman, and you have good advice and information and capabilities to share with the city of San Bruno, please raise your hand and volunteer. And Michael Selsar is our city liaison this year. There's a lot of people that come to these meetings. The fire chief, Dave Cresta, was there last year. Now we have Ari Delay, a welcome addition. Gage has been with us a couple of years. Officer Sherry Campbell was a liaison with both Community Preparedness and Crime Prevention Committee, and now we have Scott Rogie, longtime San Bruno resident, is a welcome addition. Walt Long is the president of the San Bruno Ham Radio Club and is well-known and highly regarded for his ham radio capabilities. Doug Coontz is volunteer with the Red Cross, and he's helping organize our fire alarm installation. And we get a lot of information from the Red Cross when things go wrong, when people have to move out of their house, the Red Cross is there to help them, and it's a great addition to our community. Last year, we set up tables at many events. We were in the Posey Parade, Community Day in the Park, Police Day at the Shops. We missed that this year. The dog event is really a popular event. The Firehouse Open House, Fire Station Open House 51, was a good event, highly populated. Put out the old fire truck, and it's for kids as well. The fire department was giving away helmets, bicycle helmets for kids. National August Nights Out, we missed visits from the mayor and the fire chiefs this year. That's where neighborhood watch groups have events around San Bruno, and the police and fire department, and some people in the council come visit the different neighborhood watch events. We collaborated with the Crime Prevention Committee. We have some similarities, some cross purposes for us. So the Crime Prevention Committee and the neighborhood watch people will tell people about the CERT that the fire department puts on and the work that we do and vice versa. We'll have information about crime prevention and neighborhood watch, and we're going to share that information with the CERT training, during CERT training for those people. We participated in the EOC exercise, that's Emergency Operations Center in City Hall. The radio club monitor the radios, so there's a radio operation there, and we gathered information from different municipalities and emergency organizations and shared information. This year, we did a closing of the fire at the airport, and so we had communicated a lot of movement of equipment and traffic issues. It was a good exercise down in the EOC. And we also promote San Mateo County alerts, that you can get text messages about fire in your neighborhood or closed streets, different things. And of course, the Red Cross Smoke Alarm Program. We use limited funds in our work. We're all aid volunteers. We get our materials from the Office of Emergency Services, which is run by the Sheriff's Department and FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Association. And we showcase go-bags, so I have them behind me, I don't know if you can see it. That provides water, nutrition, and safety tools for four people for three days. And we bring our radios to show, you know, what people can do. And it's really kind of a show and tell for emergency preparedness. Here are some examples of what it looks like. Top left, we let people turn on and off the gas meter. Actually, PG&E says, "Don't turn it back on. Once you turn it off, you need PG&E to come back and turn it on." We hand out different information about being prepared. These are all the members of the committee last year. We participated in Kevin Mullins' Preparedness Festival at Tanforan, and this is at the fire station, the open house. You can see a couple go-bags there. We're signing people up for CERT training and giving out brochures on different elements of community preparedness. The fire department runs community emergency response training, and it's a great training. You learn to put out a fire. You see evidence of people leveraging to extricate people. People get trained and get a bag of equipment, so you can see the helmet, the yellow blazer so that it's high visibility so it can be seen, some tools to turn off gas, for example. And it's a really great training. It takes about, you know, one week to four, about five weeks, and then a Saturday afternoon, we actually practice the skills, and that's what you see going on there. It's a great training. I would urge everyone to take it. This is Walt Long, who's president of the San Bernardino Radio Club. And one thing's gone, as you can see from Walt's shirt, things happen, and you no longer have a telephone, you no longer have cell service, but ham radios continue to work. And the radio club provides, we do a net every Monday evening where we practice using our radios. San Bruno's a hilly town, so on top of the hill you can get great podcasts, and a five-watt radio can cover a long distance, but if you're in a valley or behind a hillside, you don't have that capability. So we practice that, and we find where the dead spots are in town and where the spots are that work well. We collaborate with other radio clubs as well. And they began doing a radio session training during the CERT training, the last couple of sessions. Our goals for 2020, it will be hard to achieve because we haven't had meetings. We've had just one meeting recently. We're not setting up tables, dealing with people. But we wanted to standardize event exhibits. So each time we bring out a table, we do something a little different. So we're working to standardize that. We're looking at having schools sign up for SMC alerts. We're trying to set up a competition between schools, but that's also been put on the back mark. The Red Cross work putting up smoke detectors in people's houses for free has been put on hold because of the COVID-19. PSAs we're going to do, and we're going to download FEMA PSAs and post on the website and have PSAs run on Channel 1. And lastly, to promote PulsePoint. PulsePoint is an app on your cell phone that you can find in AED, so it's a defibrillator, basically. So when you have an emergency or someone has an emergency, you need to find the equipment quickly. That's the way to do it. And we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve you. This is Ron, our volunteer fireman. And because we didn't get to set up a table, so this last slide I did today, so pardon the advertisement, but people should have a fire extinguisher, rated A or C. Keep dry vegetation away from your home. I've been doing that clear on my back hill. Have the go-bag with water, food, emergency supplies. Store the energy. You know, there's a lot of ways to keep energy besides just having battery because you need to keep your need to keep your cellphone active and capable during times when PG&E shuts the power down. Keep your important documents in a safe place, take pictures of your credit card and other valuables, and put them on the, on the cloud for insurance purposes, and of course, get SMC alerts. So, again, thank you for the time, and it's been an honor for me to be the chair this year. I've enjoyed working with all these people, they're all capable people dedicated to helping people be prepared. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mal. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you so much. Hey, great presentation, Malcolm. It was a pleasure to be liaison on that committee, such a group of dedicated residents that are really are passionate about community preparedness in San Bruno. A couple of things that you've mentioned, I think it's so important that everybody is registered in the San Mateo County Alert. It's a really awesome program that alerts you for any sort of incidents that you should be aware of, and especially during these crazy times of fires and whatnot, a great way to get notification. So, thank you for that, and you know, the, the other thing I think is, you know, unless you're in a situation where you are having to evacuate with very little warning, you really can't think twice about it, but spending some time with some people in the last few weeks, and just connecting with them, and people have lost homes or whatnot, you really think you're prepared, but you're not. So, you know, I just encourage everybody to sort of write their list, and the other good thing is, we all have iPhones, it's a video, take everything in your home, and that'll really help pick an inventory of what you have, but it's amazing, when you've got to go through that process, how difficult it is. So, thank you for the excellent presentation, thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Hi, thanks for that presentation. I just wanted to ask, you mentioned the, the go-bag, and I didn't know if I misheard, did you say that the go-bags are actually available for residents?
They're available to buy, so there's a company in Redwood City, it's run by a family, it's called Ready America, I don't know if you can see this, some example of them. Different companies sell them, PG&E offers them, there's an advertisement where they urge you to get them. I, what I put together with myself, was, was once in the Army, and so I have a medical supply bag to deal with different situations, I take long-distance trips, and I just like to be prepared. You know, people can grab, grab any backpack and put in supplies that they'll think they'll need, medications for your kids, your, your pets, things like that, water, just keep it near the door, or in your car, or something.
Thank you, and then I had one other question. You mentioned AEDs, and I think it's, what is it, within three or four minutes of cardiac arrest, I think it's something like 60% chance of, of survival? And I just remember from a CPR class, it's something like 10%, you lose another 10% of your chance of living for every minute that you don't have that defibrillator. So my question is, have, are, are there any programs out there where individuals who, you know, may be at high risk of cardiac arrest could actually, you know, take an AED on loan, or check it out, almost like the library checks out laptops? I, I know they run between $2,000 and $3,000, if I remember correctly, and, and I'm just curious if that's even out there, and it, not just in San Bruno, but any city, because it really is the difference between life and death.
Well, I, I really don't know the answer, I could search, maybe Gage or Ari would know? No. I don't have an answer for that, but I'll look into it and get back to you.
To the chair, I was just going to say that medical technology has become very vast and, and ever-evolving, that those with heart conditions actually can have a defibrillator sort of inserted, so if you know you have an issue, they medically insert that to actually kick, kick off if you have an episode. So what happens, it's those, those residents who don't have other line issues, that all of a sudden, they're having a heart attack, and they never had any experience of it, which is typically what, what the need is. But it's, it's an expensive piece of equipment, and so I think the, one of the last ones we had installed was at the rec center, one gentleman that was coaching basketball dropped, and they got one installed there pretty quickly, so it's really great to have.
Great, thank you, thank you for the presentation, very informative.
Thank you. In my understanding, unless, I could be corrected, that every municipal facility in the city of San Bruno does have one? That's correct. Any other, thank you, any other questions? Council? Okay. Malcolm, once again, thank you to you and the committee, and that is one thing that is, is true, the passion by this group, and we wish the whole community had that preparation and passion, because as we see, things do happen, sometimes at a, at a moment's notice when you do have to flee, and, and try to take care of yourself or your neighborhood. So, thank you again for everything, and thank you for the presentation. Thank you. I'll move on to item D, and we're going to turn that over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for an announcement for our committees, boards, and commissions. In October of every year, we have vacancies and expired terms that come on all of our boards, committees, and commissions, and I have a very brief PowerPoint just to go over this for the public, it gets important to share, so that if there's anybody out there who is interested in, in applying to serve, they can do so. So as I said previously, in October of every year, half of the city's current commission, boards, and committee members' terms expire, and a recruitment process to fill those seats occurs. In October of 2020, the end of October, there will be 25 terms that will be expiring. Members whose term's expiring, and if they would like to be reconsidered for reappointment, they would need to reapply and be re-interviewed with the city council with other qualified applicants. Members of the public who are interested in serving are encouraged to apply for, apply for consideration for appointment to their preferred commission, board, or committee, and the, that could, that can happen by contacting the city clerk's office. So, we have applications online, the link is here below, I know that it's hard to get that, you know, of course, when you're watching a Zoom meeting, to try to jot down a long hyperlink, but if you go to the city's website, under the Boards, Commissions, and Committees, it's one of the first items you see when you go to that web page, it's an application for our Boards, Committees, and Commissions. And there's a rating process, and a member of the public can rate which board, which body they would like to serve on, and they can choose their top two preferences, and then that helps us narrow it down, which ones they are most interested in serving on. And they can submit their completed applications to myself, or the deputy city clerk, Vicky Hashay, our email addresses are listed here. They can also call our main line, 650-616-7061, if they have any questions, and this will be broadcast on Channel 1 on a continual loop on Nextdoor, and we will share it to our social media sites to try to garner as much interest as possible, and we will also be reaching out to the current members serving, so that if any of them have an interest to reapply, they may do so, and they're also made aware that their term is expiring. And we've already started that process, and we do have several applications on file that we've collected through the year, through the years. Applications are kept on file for two years, and we notify the application, the applicants when a seat has become vacant. We let them know by phone calls and emails to see if they are still interested. So let's say somebody filled out an application last year for Parks and Rec Commission, we want to make sure that they are still interested in serving before we just dump them in a pile for interview with the council, and usually, people are very interested to serve. We have had a lot of luck with getting applications for some of these, and so we will be reaching out soon with council to set up some interviews, and with members of the public who have applied. And we will be keeping council abreast of the applications as they arrive, so that you all are all aware of the outreach that's been happening, and the interest that's garnered. We do have a neat little flyer that will be published on Channel 1 and social media, just to kind of promote for people to get involved, to volunteer their time if they have the time, it's a great way to stay involved with their community, and to serve their communities, and to stay abreast of what's going on by serving on one of these bodies. If you have any questions?
Okay, now seeing any hands, we'll go ahead, before we move on to item E, I've been asked if I can, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, councilmember Mason.
Just a quick question, I know with Measure G, we had opening and closing gates, for the, as of now, is Measure G along with all the other committees and commissions, just year-round, anybody can submit their interest?
Yes, we do take applications year-round for all of our bodies, all of the bodies that we have. For this case, we do ask for a cutoff date, just so that we can kind of get an interview date in mind, but if we were to receive something after that date, especially if the interviews haven't occurred yet, and we will see if we can lump them in with the interviews that's going to happen, because of course, council doesn't know who's going to be interviewed until the meeting date occurs, because we want to keep it as neutral as possible for you, and, but yeah, we will definitely accept applications, but we do have a cutoff, a tentative cutoff for October 2nd, that's more for administrative purposes, so that we can kind of gather an interview date with the applicants and the council.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
One additional question, so throughout the year, is there sort of a regular routine where we can actually interview applicants that, in order to fill vacancies? Like I know that there's some committees that already have vacancies, they have for several months, so how do we get these filled on more of a regular basis?
Yes, we normally do have a process where we post a notice of vacancy, we gather applications, and then we hold interviews. Of course, with COVID, that kind of threw us all for a loop, and we had to put that on the back burner, because we had to focus on getting every, all of our boards and commissions up and running on Zoom, as well as our city council and the community foundation, and of course, as you know, with having a, a lot of special meetings in June, the council didn't have the time to focus on interview sessions for all of the vacancies that we had. Luckily for us, there were no quorum issues. If there was any quorum issues, I would have urged council to really put that first, and make sure that that body is filled as soon as, that vacancy is filled as soon as possible. We will be doing interviews for some of those vacancies that we currently have, we have four vacancies, and so we will be setting up interviews for those in the near future within, probably before the end of Octo, I'm sorry, September, so that we can get those filled now that our bodies are meeting again virtually, just so we can get those vacancies filled, and then we can focus on the expiring of terms that's coming up. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions. I've been asked, before we again go on to item E, if the city manager would, would like to come on?
Sir, hi, members of the city council, I'm just sharing the screen to show two more pieces of information related to two of our informational items. So, we actually didn't click to our very...
Good, we, we lost you for a moment.
Oh, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, technical glitch. I just want to make a quick announcement about two items under, under our announcement section. One is, we did not go to the very last line of our PowerPoint presentation with regard to remembering the gas pipeline explosion, but that's now up on the screen, and so we want to let the community know that with the sort of, with the support from the San Bruno Community Foundation, the city was able to purchase and install a outdoor kiosk for people to experience our virtual exhibit within the Girls Lynnview Park, and so that temporary exhibit will be active tomorrow morning, beginning at 9:00 AM, and it will be there through the month of September. Also, you can access the virtual exhibit online on a computer or your mobile device, and the website is on the screen, it's www.sanbruno.ca.gov/10yearslater, and you can put the number 10, or you can spell 10 years, 10, either way it works, but we wanted to point that out to the community, and let the community know that that's where you can access the virtual exhibit. The very last thing, and sort of in the magic of time, councilmember Laura Davis asked a question about the census, and so we were able to pull up that information and quickly display it on the screen, and so what you have there are, at where we stand, this is information you can find on the county's website, but through September 7th, 2020, you have where we stand compared to all of the cities in, in San Mateo County. And, and actually, what you see there are 24 jurisdictions, as we all know, there are 20 cities within the county, but the unincorporated county areas are broken up into four additional areas, and so, in this portrait, we stand 12 out of 24, with 76%, 76.6% of our population having completed the census. The number one successor is San Carlos with 84.9, and so, our marker should be 86. Overall, we're just above the county average, however, not shown on the screen, we are above the statewide average as of September 7th, which is 67%, and the overall national average is 68%. So in answer to councilmember Davis's question about where do we stand, and we are actually doing better than where we were last year at this time.
Thank you so much, Jovan.
Okay, thank you, now we'll move on to item E, receive update on COVID-19 response efforts.
Thank you, we're just pulling up the presentation right now. Okay, thank you, Jovan. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Jennifer Diano, state assistant to the city manager, and I'm here again this evening representing our Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team to provide our regular update on COVID-19. My agenda for this evening includes an update on COVID-19 statistics, most notable recent change with, with our current status is the state's new blueprint for a safer economy, local outdoor regulations that were recently implemented by the city and available for businesses affected by the mandated closure of indoor operations. I'll review a few important resources, including a tenants and property owner portal available through the state, and will be available for any questions. This screen is probably familiar to you, as I've used it before, we're pulling our local statistics for the county of San Mateo, and from the health department specifically. In San Bruno, the county reports that there are 379 positive cases in San Bruno, which is an increase from 338 cases, as reported to you last on August 25th. County Y, there are a total of 8,750 positive cases, and a total of 136 deaths. These dashboard statistics, others, in addition to others such as hospital data, lab testing data, and long-term care facility data, are all available on the county health website, and that's smchealth.org. We remain aligned with the state in our recovery effort, and I will go over what is, what's new and what's happened over the last two weeks. On Friday, August 28th, Governor Newsom announced the state of California's new blueprint for a safer economy. Blueprint for a Safer Economy replaces the former term of the state's monitoring list, and really is the guide that the state developed, allowing modified operations to certain businesses that are restricted from indoor operations. Every county in California is assigned to a tier based on new cases per day and positivity rate. You can see on, from the tiers on the screen, that the highest risk level, which is where the county of San Mateo currently is assigned as of today, is the color purple entitled widespread. In this category, many non-essential indoor business operations are closed. Next is the color red, entitled substantial. In this category, only some indoor business operations are closed, followed by the color orange is moderate, allowing some indoor business operations with modification, and lastly, yellow labeled as minimal, with most indoor business operations allowed to open with modification. Each tier has case-by-day and positive test criteria. At a minimum, counties must remain in a tier for at least three weeks before moving forward. Data is reviewed weekly, and tiers are updated on Tuesdays, according to the state's website. To move forward, a county must meet the next tier's criteria for two consecutive weeks. To move forward, a county must meet the next tier's criteria for two consecutive weeks. If a county metrics worsen for two consecutive weeks, it will be reassigned to a more restrictive tier. I'll note the widespread tier, since we're in that category. A county classified as widespread has more than seven new cases, given per 100,000 population, and more than 8% of the positive test rate. In this category, many non-essential indoor business operations are closed, but what's different is available on the state's website. Businesses can go to the state website, www.covid19.ca.gov, and pull up information on what's allowed by state and then county by county. The tier categorized as widespread, some businesses that could not operate indoors can now be open at 25% capacity, such as indoor shopping malls, hair salons, and libraries. Some businesses that were closed for indoor operations remained unable to operate indoors, but are allowed to operate outdoors. That is only if local rules are allowing that, and I'll provide more information on that in the next slide or two. And examples of this type of business, nail salon or card rooms. And then lastly, some businesses that were closed are businesses that remain closed at this time, and that includes bars and indoor theaters. Our city EOC team was simultaneously working to develop new outdoor regulations to support the state's effort by also developing a way for businesses to include a portion of their activities outdoors and proper social distancing and safety protocols in place. For example, this program allows putting the table or chairs outside adjacent to a business, includes temporary use of private property and city-owned property. The city will waive encroachment fees for outdoor visits on public property affected by these mandated closures. Use of private-owned property or enhanced outdoor visits can temporarily be implemented with the submission of an application to the city, and as long as all other requirements of the program are abided by and have property owner permission. This is all similar to the previously established outdoor dining program. The new temporary regulations were developed to support our business community, including dining, which was already existing, card rooms, personal care services, gyms, non-critical businesses, for example, offices, and places of worship. This expanded temporary outdoor business program is available only while the city of San Bruno's determination of a local emergency is in effect. And for any business owner that has a question on private property, they can direct their question to our building department. That phone number is that 650-616-7074. And public property would go through our public works department, and that would be pulling an encroachment permit. That number is 650-616-7065, or an application is available online. Supporting our local business community is more important now than ever. How can you help our community by supporting our businesses? There are a couple of ways that you can do so. Ordering takeout from your favorite San Bruno restaurant, ordering goods for curbside pickup, calling your favorite place of business to see if they have modified operations that are available, and checking to see if services are available online. Many of our local businesses, as we know, have now adjusted their operations during the pandemic, and have really developed innovative ways to continue to provide services to our community in a healthier, in a healthy manner. And so I encourage everyone to stay in touch with their favorite businesses in our town. With the state regulations, county regulations, and local regulations, sometimes things get a bit confusing. I wanted to take a moment to just quickly review the difference that we have here. You can see on the screen. Recently received a telephone call from a Napa County resident asking why their regulations are different from the city of San Bruno. And while we're aligned with the state, we do have a few county orders that remain in effect, and you may ask yourself what they are, since there's so much information in the public arena. But what we have in place is fairly straightforward. I think most of us are used to it and have accommodated our schedules, but just as a reminder, face coverings are required. There are specified exceptions, but when in public, face coverings are required. Social distancing requirements, all individuals must adhere to social distancing and the county health order, and that includes maintaining six feet of space for social distancing from individuals who are not part of the same household. Washing hands for at least 20 seconds and using hand sanitizers, as recognized by the CDC. Covering coughs and sneezes in a tissue or fabric, or in your elbow or sleeve. Try not to use your hands. Avoid social interaction outside of the household when you're sick or have any symptoms that appear to be related, or even suspected to be related to COVID-19. Social distancing protocols and health safety plans are required for all businesses, and you may notice they're posted in the windows of many of our local businesses. Those are required by the county. No mass gatherings. Gatherings of over 50 people are prohibited unless a larger gathering is specified and allowed by the state. And other health orders are available regarding quarantine and isolation. They're all on the county's website, and that's at smchgov.org, and they all remain in effect. Each update provided you information on resources of high interest. And tonight, there are a few important ones for families that are struggling financially with rent, and families who are adapting to distance learning programs and have children at home. But first, I'm going to start with COVID-19 testing. Additional testing dates have been announced by the county to be held in San Bruno. The testing will be conducted at 9:07/5 baseline. This is the same location that has generously hosted the testing sites over the last few months. The dates are Wednesday, September 23rd, and Wednesday, September 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Registration is required and fills up quickly, so please visit projectbaseline.com/covid19. You can sign up there for the San Bruno site, or consider other sites that are within our county if registration is limited. More information on the testing site is available through the county. And also, as a reminder, you may want to contact your primary care physician, because they may offer testing and have a more expedited process in getting the results back to you. Next is new relief for renters and homeowners. There was legislation that took effect August 31st, and that protects many Californians who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage because of COVID-19 impacts. The state has developed a portal to provide an interactive tool to help tenants, landlords, homeowners to know what rights and options there are under the Tenant, Homeowner, and Small Landlord Relief and Stabilization Act of 2020. On the portal, guidelines, forms, and resources are all available. Tenants can really learn how they may be able to prevent eviction and pay rent on manageable terms. Likewise, landlords can learn about support that they can provide and get guidelines on working with their tenants. And there's two minutes to answer questions below to, or in the link below to get a tailored report that can be used. More information is, the link is listed there as source, but it's covid19.ca.gov. Unfortunately, given COVID-19 and the wildfires alike, there are many that prey on others, unfortunately. It's important to be aware not to be taken advantage of by avoiding COVID-19 scams. These tips are good to keep in mind, you know, during COVID and outside of COVID. Never provide personal identifying information to anyone who calls you. Never provide prepaid payment card information over the phone. When in doubt, just hang up, and don't open suspicious emails or click on any links. Our police chief, excuse me, police chief produced a short PSA earlier this year. It's available on our website and provides a helpful reminder to stay alert and be aware of scams at this time and at any time. And while more people are at home with their children and working on adapting to distancing, I wanted to remind families that our San Bruno Public Library has many online services and virtual experiences available to assist. One great example of our service modifications include Live Storytime. Shortly after our library was closed, our library team developed a Live Storytime series that children can watch from home. This is a great way to continue to encourage literacy, engagement, while occupying children's time. Storytime is streamed live on YouTube every Tuesday and Thursday at 11:15, and recordings are also available at storytime.sanbrunolibrary.org. And that is linked in the presentation for those that would like to connect directly. Our library also offers curbside pickup for material reservations. You can partake in this convenient service by reserving your material and scheduling an appointment for pickup. When you arrive for your appointment, you simply call the library, and one of the friendly staff members will walk out to your vehicle and deliver your order to you. It's really that simple, honestly. And so you can contact our library by going to the link on the website, or you can call to get more information, and that phone number is 650-616-7078. We also have a virtual recreation center for the fun part of schooling. It was created for summertime, however, there are many resources for families that need something to do remotely, and the virtual center split up into multiple categories. It's a wide array of online options, so this resource does not apply to one particular age group, or youth, or are more mature portion of the community. And so there's plenty for all ages, and that includes arts and crafts, coding and engineering, cooking and nutrition, dance, fitness, learning resources, and science. And lastly, I wanted to take a moment to encourage those who have not already filled out their census to do so while they're at home. The census is important to make sure San Bruno receives federal funding for public services, parks, schools, and many more services provided by the county. Census workers are out knocking on doors now, and they all have proper PPE and are practicing social distancing, and so they're going to be outreach to properties that have not yet submitted their account. As discussed earlier by the mayor and the city manager, responses are due by September 30th, and you can submit your account by visiting my2020census.gov, or by calling And like I've said before, please stay connected. If you're not already signed up for our city accounts on Net Store, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, please do so. We also put all of this information on our local channel and on our website. For those that are not on social media, the information is available, and so please explore. There's a lot of information available to you. That concludes my presentation for this evening. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you very much, Jennifer, and to everyone for all that information. We still have to be very careful. I had a question regarding enforcement. So I've had a few residents contact me, and if there's a business out there that is kind of doing things in an interesting way, who should a resident call?
Siobhan Groban, city manager. Councilmember Medina, the best person for a resident or any person frankly, to call would be our police department non-emergency line. There are new powers that we have that the county adopted to fine businesses for inappropriate practices and not abiding with the county health officer's order. We routinely receive emails and calls into the non-emergency number for matters like this, and I know firsthand that the police department has done an excellent job triaging them, but then also going out, making direct contact with the business, and attaining compliance for everyone's safety.
Excellent, thank you very much. That's 616-7100.
Yes.
Councilmember Mason.
Thanks for that presentation, Jennifer. I just wanted to add for the members of the public court listening that Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 3088 last week, and it just, it just states that tenants who pay at least 25% of their new rent from September 1st through January 31st, 2021, will be protected from eviction. Those who fail to meet the minimum rent payment could be removed beginning February 1st, 2021. It also provides a reprieve for tenants who have not paid the rent between March and August, and allows a landlord to sue for that back rent beginning in March of 2021. These do, these are related specifically to COVID hardships, and that there has to be a declaration from the tenant, but there has been a lot of questions, I know to me, from renters who are having a really hard time, and I think that this assembly bill is really important to share, because it's going to protect our, our really most disenfranchised community. That was it, thank you. Thanks, Jennifer, for that update.
Okay, seeing nothing more. Jennifer, once again, thank you for all the information and the detail. Now, we're going to move on to consent. Item number five on the agenda. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Is there, does anybody have anything that they want to have for a separate vote? Okay, seeing none for that. Is there any item that we just have some questions or want some additional information from staff? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I wanted to pull item, or not pull, but to comment on 5F. Got it? Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
I just wanted to ask a question on 5D specifically, well, I guess it's both, it's more of a process question, but 5D, please.
You got it, thank you. Okay, seeing nothing else, let's start with 5D. Item D, approve the special and regular meeting minutes for meetings of August 20th and 25th, 2020.
Yeah, I know that this process is still new around the commission, the council bringing items to the council comments, to then direct back to staff. And so what I wanted to ask is, I noticed that in one of the items, it was a unanimous approval, and then the other item didn't say who approved, and because we need a majority, I was hoping that we can actually record who's supporting, moving forward, and who's not, just for purposes of the record.
So in an example of this, if there's a motion and a second to approve the consent, then that's what you're asking for to be noted for?
Not in the consent, it's in the comments from councilmembers. So for example, tonight, Marty is asking to hold study session to review the city's street sweeping enforcement policies. If three councilmembers agree to have staff spend their time to look into that, then we move forward, but if two, then we don't move forward. And so because technically, it's on here, because we're trying to, I think, make sure that the, that we have a majority, right? And we're not just using staff time on any item, I think it should be also documented, since we're taking a vote essentially, who's voting, who's supporting it.
To the chair.
Well, first of all, Councilmember Medina, you had your hand up on item D? No. Okay, Councilmember Davis.
Sorry.
No, no worries.
I was saying, I didn't see anybody else's hand up that came up. Um, but my comment to that would be that I don't think that in the minutes that we are consistent with that same suggestion. There's always a first and second. I know that that's recorded, but I also believe the video is really the best place to go back in and review that, if you want to look at details. But I think we get into these, I mean, I remember years ago, meeting minutes were very detailed, right? And we got, and they got away from that. I remember being at the meeting where they started talking about, let's just have action minutes, because, folks, we can talk a lot, right? And there's he said, she said, and before you know it, it gets really kind of convoluted. And so I think to keep it simple, we, just like everything else, either passes or it fails, and if anybody wants to go back in and look at the details of who said what, they're all archived videos, and I think that's the best place to keep them. But I wouldn't want to change what we're already doing on other agenda items.
Okay, anything else on D? I'm going to go move on to item F.
Oh, to the mayor. It might be a question for the city attorney, because I know that for action items, you are required to state who votes yes and who votes no. That's why the minute state, the As and the Na's, and I think the confusion is- And I think the confusion is around this newer process that's falling under the commission. I keep saying commission, but the council comments. And if it is an action, and that's why we're putting it there, because we're trying to stay away from this, you know, idea of having something or a discussion that's not agendized, then I feel like it is technically a vote. But I'd let the city attorney chime in on that.
Sure, Councilmember Mason, thank you for the question. You're correct, there's no legal requirement that there be a vote on that item. Sometimes it's actually difficult for a vote to be taken, because there is a wide-ranging discussion. There may or may not be a consensus. There may be enough of a consensus on something to bring back, but not other things. Sometimes the city manager or another staff person will chime in to say, well, we'll come back with X and Y, but, you know, not Z, for example. And so it's really difficult, I think, under those circumstances to figure out, well, what is, is there a formal motion? What is the formal motion? Who voted in favor of X and Y but not Z? I could see where it could become somewhat convoluted, so there's probably a reason to keep it the way it is. But if the city council so directs, they could certainly do so, and staff would do their best to sort of record any sort of formal actions. But often, formal actions are not taken on those agenda items.
So I'm not asking for a vote. I'm just asking if we can look into that at some point, and maybe have a discussion later on.
Sure. To the chair.
City manager.
Sure. Counsel, I think the most appropriate time would be during council policies and procedures. So when we have a study session on council policies and procedures, we can carve out some time around talking around minutes and how things are recorded, and have a dedicated discussion, and then consensus to change our process, or keep our process, or make some minor tweaks around the agents, but.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, the next item for some follow-up. Item F, accept resignation from bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee member affected July 14, 2020, and direct the city clerk to post a notice of vacancies in accordance with state law. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to publicly acknowledge Adam Tizetti, his service on the bike pedestrian committee. He's an avid biker, and he's going to be missed, and I just wanted to thank him. He also was a San Bruno Lion, and he's moving to the East Bay, and he won't be able to join us anymore. So I just wanted to thank him for his service and for everybody else's serving. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that goes through consent. Is there action from council on consent? A through F.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Davis, seconded by Medina to approve consent. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Thank you. Sorry. I apologize. Now we'll move on to item six. Public hearing, please.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing, give second reading, and adopt an ordinance updating the building and fire code.
Director Smith.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Darcy Smith. I'm the Community and Economic Plan Director, and I'll be making the presentation tonight on this item, which is the public hearing and waiving second reading for adoption of the 2019 Fire and Building Code ordinances by reference with local amendments. So the objective is, first thing I'll cover, then I'll move into a quick background. This was before you had the last regular city council meeting on August 25th. I'll provide an overview of the ordinances that are before you tonight for adoption, and end with tonight's action and time for questions. And the objective, as I stated earlier, is to hold the public hearing, waive the second reading, and adopt the building and fire code ordinances. And there was a large number of city staff who worked on these items as part of a special projects team. So later, after my presentation, if there are any technical questions about the code, they may be most appropriately answered by Roy Bernal, our chief building official, who's in attendance tonight, or Gage Slace, the fire marshal, who is also here. And I want to take a moment to thank special assistants from the planning team and the report preparation, and the city attorney, Mark Zaffarano. So I'll cover the background pretty quickly, but I just wanted to point out the special sequencing for this item, because it is a little bit unusual. So as I mentioned, this is the second meeting in a two-part meeting. On August 25th, the city council took the first step to hold the first reading and introduce the ordinances and adopt the associated resolution. But tonight is the public hearing. Typically, the public hearing may come first, such as for planning applications or zoning vote amendments. But why the public hearing is required as the second step for adoption of the code by reference is because of the government code, Section 50022.3. And this is a unique procedure, because it's an adoption of the codes by reference, and those are state codes. So this usually only happens three times a year, so just a quick refresher on the sequence, since it is pretty rare. Or I should say every three years, not three times a year. Sorry. So every three years, the State of California Building Standards Commission adopts these new codes. And again, as I covered them, there is multiple parts in very voluminous binders, commonly referred to as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. And again, they apply across the state, and they're applied every three years. If for some reason they need a little bit of adjustment, they'll have a mid-cycle adjustment. Typically, given all the work that local governments have to make, such as you saw with these two meetings, they don't like to change them that often. So what are these codes? Really briefly, they're related to designing construction for private property largely. And they relate to how the building is built, the structural elements, the plumbing and electrical and mechanical systems, addressing some really important topics now, such as fire and life safety, energy conservation, green or sustainable building design, and then accessibility, so ADA access in around buildings. Commonly, they're referred to, as you see here, the 2019 California Building Codes. As I mentioned previously, there's many different parts of that code that address different topics. And they went into effect automatically statewide, January 1st. And we have the opportunity to adopt local amendments if we have unique climatic, geological, or topographical conditions, that I went into more detail. And we actually here have all of those. We have steep slopes. We have a lot of fog, dense fog that impairs visibility. And we also have other kind of unique constraints here. So how does local implementation work? Well, we're required, again, by state law, to enforce these codes when we issue building permits. So these largely affect private property and all the practitioners who work in private construction, such as contractors, architects, other design professionals. They gear up learning these codes, again, because they apply statewide. And we have been requiring our local building permits to comply with them. So what do they address? Well, you see examples here of the types of construction, such as solar, new vertical construction, or new underground construction, as you see on the right. And we have been applying these successfully with no major issues. Again, I think the state takes a lot of leadership in this area around building and fire codes that make our job at the local level easier, because they are city statewide. And the state rolls out a massive training and education effort, which then relieves the burden on us. So we're able, for example, to quickly update our website with a lot of resources. And we're also able to train our staff in a very cost-effective manner around these new codes. So I'll briefly give you an overview of the ordinances. And notable, just to point out, that there are seven ordinances, but each of those ordinances amends a different chapter. So as you see here in this little screenshot of our website, we're sort of amending the first part of the Title 11. For example, we're amending the local building code, and local energy code, and the local fire code. But what we are not touching, I just want to reassure everyone, is our local adopted unique codes, such as our new floodplain management requirements. They were adopted last year. So those will remain in place. And again, we're adopting the state codes by reference and minor local amendments. And we have no new local amendments for the building codes. We're just readopting everything that was done last year. I just want to pause and really point out one key thing that really took a lot of leadership and work by our fire marshal, is that we're kind of modernizing our local fire code. And what it was previously called was the International Fire Code, which really doesn't make a lot of sense. So our fire marshal spent a lot of, you know, late nights just reformatting the chapter, no dramatic change. But it's something that I just want to pause to say how proud we should be that we now have the San Bruno Fire Code that has improved formatting and readability. And that's in line with efforts that the city manager has undertaken to go through the different titles and modernize them. So as I mentioned previously, we're a unique city, that we have unique weather. We have unique geographical and topographical conditions, as you see here, and as we've just experienced in our city recently. So we do have the right that the state gives us to have local amendments. They are very minor. And one of the, the only new one that you're faced with tonight is around the signage for first responders. And the state does require this signage, but it doesn't actually specify the exact size. And so what our local amendment would do is provide very specific and clear requirements for local signage to ensure consistency when our first responders go out, if there are hazardous materials on site. So in closing, tonight's action before you is pretty simple. It's to open and close the public hearing, hold that, waive the second reading, and adopt the 2019 Fire and Building Code ordinances by reference with local amendments. And if they are adopted, then they would go into effect three days from tonight. And sort of the main changes that would be then, you know, cleaning up our website and ensuring we have the most recent codes referenced there for the public to use. So that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions for myself or the other staff available tonight with whoever the subject matter experts, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for your presentation. This is a public hearing, so at this time, if anyone from the public wishes to speak on this topic, if you could please be identified, and the city clerk will bring you in.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So this is a, this is a public hearing, so once the council closes it and brings it back to the council, that will be concluded at that point. Still seeing no hands up from our audience. Do we have action to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Medina Salazar, motion made, seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Linda? To close the public hearing, and hear your vote. Councilmember Mason, are you approving to close the public hearing?
Councilwoman Mason, I'm having trouble unmuting you.
Councilwoman Mason, how about just a thumbs up or thumbs down?
I think, I'm not sure she can hear us, actually. I think she's having technical difficulties.
Okay.
The motion would carry as is.
Okay. So what we'll do at this point, and thank you, city clerk. So questions from my colleagues, your staff. Councilmember Mason, your hand is up?
I'm trying to contact her now. I'm not, I'm not sure if she knows, she can hear us right now.
Okay. Any other, I don't, I've not seen any other hands up from other colleagues?
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading.
Is there a second?
And I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. A motion made and seconded to waive the second reading. Roll call, please.
Okay, we do have Councilmember Mason back. Just one moment here. So there was a motion made by Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilmember Davis.
To waive the second reading.
Yes, Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason, if you can hear us, can you give us a thumbs up? Okay, I think we lost her again. Okay, Councilwoman Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, and then the last action item on this would be adopt the ordinance. Any action from council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason, can you hear us? Okay, Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay, so that concludes the public hearing. Before we move on to conduct the business, maybe we can take a couple minutes so we can get Councilmember Mason connected back.
Thank you. I can, I'll call her again. Thank you.
So folks, we will take about a five-minute recess.
Okay, I've notified the mayor that everything is back to normal now. Thank you, thanks for, thanks for hanging in there with me.
No problem. You had good poses, by the way. Some frozen poses. They're, they're all very nice.
I couldn't, I couldn't see. Like, it would just flip over after a couple seconds, so.
I could tell, like, the movement was like, you know, it wasn't smooth, it was like choppy.
Yeah.
You could tell something was going on.
Thank you.
Just wait for Councilmember Sal, oh, that was quick. Okay. City manager, are we ready?
Ready, Mr. Mayor.
All right, city clerk, are we ready to begin?
Yes, we are.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call back from the recess of the San Bruno City Council meeting of September 8th. We had some technical difficulty under the public hearing, and I'd like to go to Councilmember Mason. Though we already did vote, but would you like, for the record, to have your vote so that it can be acknowledged, the yea or nay on the items of the closing of the public hearing, waiving the second reading, and the adoption of the ordinance?
Yeah, I just have, yeah, I did have one question for Director Smith.
Oh, absolutely.
And thank you for your patience in accommodating me.
Of course.
My question is just, in, in going through the fire code, it's definitely one I'm not familiar with, well, I should say the entire, this entire section. And so, my question in this particular area is, are these only updates that were provided after this three-year review, or did the city also make additional, additional changes based on local city recommendations?
So, we only made one local change to the fire code, which was to adopt more specific clarity for hazardous material signage, the little picture that I showed. That's the only local change that's new this cycle. Previously, there were other local amendments, such as, for example, the illuminated address sign, and that was adopted three years, three years ago and will remain in effect.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna vote yes, so, thank you. Mayor Medina, you're muted.
So, now it's me. So, let's move on to conduct of business, item seven. And city clerk, if you could take the first one, please?
Item 7A, designate voting delegate and an alternate to the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Conference on October 7th through 9th, 2020. And there's no PowerPoint for this, it's just a brief item. The League of, League of California Cities, I'm sorry, I cannot speak tonight. Their annual conference is usually held in Long Beach, California every year. This year, due to COVID, they have canceled their in-person conference and will be holding it virtually. And member cities, which is what Scrutto is, are offered an opportunity for their members to go to the conference for $50. And at the end of the conference, there is a voting that occurs on a number of resolutions that the league has provided. And every year, a voting delegate is chosen from a member of the city to represent San Bruno in, in that process. And this year, Mayor Medina has offered to be the delegate to vote on the resolutions that the league will be presenting at the end of their annual conference on October 9th.
But, that, I, I want to see if that has council backing. This is something that normally was done, but I like the collaborative element of this, but also we need a, an alternate, should I not be present, whether it's the vice mayor or whoever. The, you know, the, it's $50, so it's certainly a big savings, which usually would be the airfare, the registration, and all of that. And looking at the agenda, how they're going to do virtual networking, I, it's kind of gonna be interesting, but that's how they place it. So, anyway, any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Medina?
I'm totally in support of, of having our mayor do the voting, and if the vice mayor or anybody else wants to do it, that's great. These conferences are pretty interesting, and if another council member just wanted to attend for 50 bucks, that seems like a pretty good deal. So, are other council members allowed to, to Zoom in for 50 bucks?
Yes, it is available for any, any representative from the member city, which would include elected officials and staff members. And so, this would, if the $50 entrance would give you access to the sessions that are going to be provided at the conference virtually now. I believe they're going to hold them in two-to-three hour increments, so that you don't Zoom out, so to speak, and you can stay engaged, and then they will have breakout sessions in each of the topics. And so, it is, if, if you would like to attend or other council members would like to attend, I would encourage you to email me so that we can get you signed up appropriately, because although this is going to be different, usually when they're in person, they sell out, they can sell out of spots. Where now that it's virtual, they're not necessarily planning on selling out, however, they are filling up their Zoom sessions very quickly. And so, they're looking at, do they need to expand or have double sessions in one day, that sort of thing. So, it is good to sign up early.
That's great, thank you.
Councilmember Davis?
Just a quick question. How does it work in the past with who represents San Bruno?
It's varied. Usually, it went to the mayor, and then the staff report would come forward, and in the past, Councilmember O'Connell had, Vice Mayor O'Connell had attended often, because it's three days during the business week.
And the travel?
And the travel. But I prefer to bring this up to us as a collective. What I will need to do is send the 2020 Annual Conference Voting Delegate Alternate Form in. So, anyway, that's why it's on the agenda, so we, if I can fill it out with the appropriate voting and second voting person.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm not hearing any objection for myself representing San Bruno. Vice Mayor, are you able to be the alternate, or would you?
I, I would definitely like to be the alternate.
Okay. That's concurrence with council, we'll, we'll go ahead and have that form, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nods and thumbs up, so, thank you. Okay, let's move on to conduct of business, item B. City clerk?
Okay, item 7B, adopt a resolution approving contract extension agreements between the city of San Bruno and Teamsters Local 856, miscellaneous, public safety mid-management, fire and police for the term January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, and Teamsters Local 350 mid-management for the term January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021.
Ms. Brazil?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name's Jennifer Brazil, I'm the Assistant City Manager, Chief People Officer, and I will be presenting the MOU contract amendments. Our agenda for this evening is a bit about background, the agreement terms, an overview of the retiree plus health coverage, and a recommended action. The city has reached an agreement with the five bargaining groups represented by the Teamsters Union. Staff is currently working on the open agreement with the San Bruno Management Employee Association, SBMEA. We would like to express our gratitude to the employee groups in developing successor contracts that are reflective of the city's fiscal reality, as these agreements do not include cost of living adjustments. Through this agreement, budgetary adjustments and defunding 27 positions may address the budgetary shortfall. The contract conditions for these five groups are through December 31st, 2021. The agreement terms include no change in salary through December 31st, 2021, except for scheduled increases that have already been established through previous agreements that have been approved and budgeted. Additionally, should San Bruno Management Employee Association, SBMEA, receive a cost of living adjustment, the mid managers will receive the same. As a reminder, the mid managers had no scheduled increases for 2020. Also agreed upon are no layoffs with a caveat. We have de-funded 27 positions, so through December 31st, 2021, unless the fiscal year 2021 general fund actual base revenues decreases by 2.5 million or greater from the adopted budget, the no layoff provision will be voided. The general fund base revenue is defined as taxes, departmental revenues, and franchise fees. Additionally, the city agreed to continue the health plan contribution as previously established, where the city pays 75% of the employee, and, and the employee pays 25% of the health and welfare benefit premium increases over the prior plan year. A modification to the retiree health program includes a retiree plus health coverage for employees. This program for a low monthly cost will provide those employees with 28 years of service, coverage for their retiree health premiums upon retirement. As a reminder, the city's retiree health coverage is under the Teamsters Trust and offers the city no unfunded liability of retiring medical costs. The total cost of this program is $38.40 per month, which is a city cost of $28.80 per month, and an employee cost of $9.60 per month. Currently, we have 233 employees. The total cost, annual cost for the fiscal year 2021 is $40,260.40. Should 260 positions be restored, the total annual cost could rise to $89,856 annually for this additional benefit to employees. No additional funding is required beyond that already allocated and approved in the current city budget. The recommended action for this evening is to adopt a resolution approving the contract extension agreements between the city of San Bruno and Teamsters Local 856, miscellaneous, public safety, mid, um, public safety mid-management, fire and police for the term January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, and Teamsters Local 350 mid-management for the term January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you so much, Jennifer, for your report. It seems like a few slides for a ton, a lot of work, hours and hours, months and months of work, and I can't thank staff enough for the direction, the coordination of these discussions throughout the last several months. It has been an eye-opener, it has been a learning experience, and it's been a very challenging process to go through, understanding our, our financial situation. So, I just want to thank everybody involved in the process, thank you so much, and for the groups that have agreed to this, so, thank you.
Seeing no other hands, this is, needs a resolution in order for it to be adopted. Is there any action from council?
The chair, I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made, Salazar, Davis. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Aye. Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 7C, information update on August 25th, 2020, council COVID-19 initiatives, potential drive-in movie at Tanfran, and partial street closure of San Mateo Avenue for outdoor dining slash retail.
City manager?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council, Devon Rogan, city manager. I want to give a information update on two items, as the title mentioned. One is outdoor dining, thank you, and the second is a potential downtown street closure. You know, I'd be remiss in letting the past presentation go by without just saying thank you to Jennifer Brazil, our Assistant City Manager. This is her new debut presentation. She started with us two months ago and really stepped both feet in supporting our labor negotiations. And I'm so happy to relinquish being the city manager and the assistant city manager, but thank you so much for everything you've done. It, it is truly a testament to the organization and partnership that you have towards with our, with our employees and the organization. So, for the update on these two items, as we all know at the last city council meeting, the city council asked staff to look into two items related to COVID-19. One was a potential drive-in movie to take place at Tanfran, and the other was looking at a potential street closure for San Mateo Avenue. Would it be interesting to look at, interval, and with potential to return to the city council for additional direction? Why don't I begin first with the drive-in movie theater, because that is unfortunately the simplest one, because we hit a roadblock. So, after the last council meeting, we partnered with Tanfran, the mayor made the initial contact with Linda Larson from CBRE, who's the manager of Tanfran, and we put together a staff team, people from the police department or public works department, and our community services department, as well as myself, to partner with Tanfran to potentially do a drive-in movie theater there. And we had a few calls with the city of Burlingame, who recently did a similar event. What we found out is to hold the event at approximately $10,000. There's some initial set of costs we could leverage, horsepower that we have, because we did movies in the park previously, and so our staff is familiar with process. And the Tanfran was willing to use some of their own marketing money to leverage, provide some leverage and inertia to the, to the project. Unfortunately, conversations with the cinema have prevented us from moving forward. It's looking like they're preparing to reopen as soon as possible, and the lease between the cinema and the mall actually prohibits any other showing of cinemas or movies on the property. And so, it's not currently known when, when the cinema will reopen. And so, it's not currently known when, when the cinema will reopen, and that very well could be the next time we have a downgrade in our county-wide COVID-19 measure, COVID-19 restrictions. And so, the mall thought that it was prudent to back away from these conversations, given the fact that the cinema has an exclusive right for movie theaters, and currently they're looking forward to welcoming participants back, even if they can open partially. And so, bringing it back to staff, we've had some conversations about returning our movies in the park program, and would really like to flag that to the next downgrade in our COVID-19 stats that you may remember from the presentation that Jennifer Dionos provided earlier today. We are currently in the highest category for COVID-19 risk in the state in widespread. The next downgrade is to the substantial category. We do believe that when we hit that next downgrade, weather permitting, we could tilt up a movies in the park and do a little bit of what some other communities have done for some of their spontaneous park gatherings, and draw circles on the grass and make sure that there's appropriate distance. And so, staff will begin to look at implementing that program, weather permitting. Hopefully, we don't have smoke from the fires, and it's not too windy to begin that program. But should that happen, we would look to reactivate in that fashion. And so, I continue questions on that, and for the next one, we do have a presentation.
There is a member of the community, so I'm not certain it's on this topic. I know there was, Mr. O'Brien wanted to speak on the next one, so why don't we take one at a time, if we could, and we'll ask city clerk if he can bring in Mr. Mercney, please.
Yes, Ryan Mercney, I am, hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, there you are. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I would like to speak in support of downtown dining and shutting off the streets a couple of days of the week. While it's not a solution to the problems that we have, I think it goes forward to attracting people downtown, and that it can be done socially distan, oh, safely with social distancing. Also, to bring the cost down, I'm wondering if we can have either the workers at the restaurants that would partake, be the ones setting up and taking down the tables, or could we ask the community to volunteer? It benefits us all to see a thriving downtown, and I think this is one of the few places that we can do something socially distant that is safe and brings back some revenue to our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I, I don't see any other hand raised. I'm giving it a moment, because I know that, Sir O'Brien.
We'll have the city manager go into, because he has a presentation, into the second item, and then we can see if anybody else. City manager?
Okay. Mayor and council, so a brief presentation, so similar to looking into a potential drive-in movie, we organized a team, and the council direction that we had at the very last meeting was investigate a partial closure of San Mateo Avenue for outdoor dining to support our business community, that, and the thought was potentially do it Saturdays during September, potentially from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We also talked about seeking input from businesses. We have some information to share there. Council wanted estimated cost, and then the direction ended with return to the council for further direction, and so that is why we're here tonight. So, a partial closure, so at the council meeting, and upon further research, we really took a look into if we were going to implement a pilot project to close San Mateo Avenue, where would be the most appropriate location? And we, we sort of zeroed in on this location at the last council meeting, but it's San Mateo Avenue between Kings and Angus, and those of you that are very familiar with downtown will know that there are a total of five entrances to, to this block section. And the reason why we all centered on this, because it's a block section that is contained, you have a number of restaurants, and this pilot project was really geared toward supporting our restaurants, and you have Articio Hills there that has just set up their outdoor casino area that will be active, and so there may be some spin-off support for the event. And we do have a number of businesses on this part of San Mateo Avenue that are taking, currently taking advantage of the expedited rules that the city has for sidewalk dining. And so, the five closure points are two hard closures at Kings and San Mateo Avenue, on the top portion of the screen, then followed by another hard closure on the southern portion of San Mateo Avenue at Angus. And by hard closure, I mean closing the street with barricades that are, one, both capable of stopping a car with a, with a opening that is staff, so we can have emergency vehicle access. And so, as we'll talk about it in the next slide, we will need to maintain a 20-foot access down the center of the road, should there be a need for emergency vehicle, and so we would do a hard closure, but have it staff with the ability to, to open. This has been an important marker, which is a Samtrans bus stop that travels on Saturdays down San Mateo Avenue. The other three closures are, there's an entrance here for a portion of the parking lot for Articio Hills, there's another one here for Articio Hills, and there is this area here for, to our city parking lot, Lot 8. There's actually another entrance here, there, Articio Hills has already taken care of this with their existing modifications, as well as the other entrance here, but we feel comfortable with the work that has already been done there. So, the, the temporary closures we would implement would be fine, and this is also a nice block section, because we will not be needing to protect the intersections, it's really two hard closures. So, a few details about a potential closure on Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Note that we, the city has the current best practice of noticing event parking restrictions for 72 hours before the event, and so if we are talking about a Saturday event, the notices would typically go out 72 hours in advance, and so we would be noticing on Wednesday, putting up payframes and signs, letting people know that there will be parking restrictions on that area. No parking in the designated area, so San Mateo Avenue between Kings and, Angus and Kings, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. You may say, well, that's longer than the event, and so it's three hours before and two hours after the event. That's necessary for setup, both of the road closures, as well as for the restaurants to allow time for setup and cleanup, as well as potentially towing vehicles. When these events occur, even though you notice 72 hours in advance, there may be cars that are still there when time comes around, and so we would be prepared to implement normal practices and tow vehicles out of area. The city and the Chamber of Commerce will jointly advertise the event using various social media platforms, and the Chamber of Commerce, numerous grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation, has actually added some part-time staff, and so they, they have agreed to help out with some power to get the word out. The city will be responsible for road closures and security. Our public works department will be geared up to implement the road closures, and security will of course be provided by the police department. One of the citizens hit on the next point, which is absolutely, businesses will be responsible for cleanup and setup of their own tables, and so this is strictly a, an event where the city is providing the table, so to speak, by closing the roads, but the businesses will provide, provide the service. The other important key point that we didn't really get into at the last council meeting, but I believe it was the intent, so we have it here, which is only businesses with a presence in the designated area can participate. And this is important, because what we do not want to create is a spare-type atmosphere, but what we were talking about doing, is my understanding is closing a portion of San Bruno Avenue to allow the businesses that, that border that area to hopefully attain more business and provide a service to the community. And so, I, I think that's a discussion point for us, but judging from the conversation, I, I do believe that was the council's intent, not to invite others and have space where people can be, but it's really designated for the businesses in that area. Important to point out, both by businesses, we mean both restaurants and retail. So, if there's a retail establishment in the area and they wanted to set out a table to sell their merchandise, we would be okay with that. I believe that was the intent expressed as well. And then I mentioned the 20-foot clearance down the middle of the street would be reserved for emergency vehicle access. So, what is the cost? So, we put together preliminary costs, and the total jump to it for one day is $6,300. Now, you should know that this represents the net additional costs. We, we are not charging for items like we would for a non-city sponsored special event, where there would be time for merchandise that the city are, or materials that the city already has, or time to use equipment that we already have. So, because this is a city-sponsored event, we are not charging for those. But hard dollar cost is a total of $4,600 from the public works department, for staffing to set up the event, as well as barricades, a little bit over half of that, or staffing, and the rest is renting barricades. You may be wondering what type of barricades. Hard barricades that are capable of stopping a car, so both water-filled barricades, as well as concrete barricades. We not stop those with our various projects, we always rent those, and so we would do that for this instance, and then we would also have police, an officer a few hours before the event to supervise the closing of the roads, as well as to ticket and tow any vehicles that are necessary, as well as two CSOs to work the event. And so, I wanted to talk to council about a potential alternative that came up, actually from another council member to me, which is to look at a potential alternative if the council did not want to close this portion of the street for outdoor dining, but instead look at, in this same area, we have our Lot 8, which is this lot that goes from Hassan Avenue to San Mateo Avenue, city-owned property, and the concept is potentially close it or, and set it up for self-service to-go dining, and so we would set up picnic tables in this area, appropriately space them apart, to allow all businesses to participate. Some businesses may set up tables, some may not, but all that are open are serving to-go meals, and so patrons can take their, their meals to go and eat in the parking lot, and we can decide whether we close the entire parking lot or only the front portion, and so to close it at roughly the halfway mark, and closure here, middle, middle of the parking lot, and on San Mateo Avenue. A few additional considerations that the city council like to move forward with closing the portion of San Mateo Avenue that we talked about, again, Kings to Kings, the 24-hour notice would go out on Wednesdays, and so if the council had yes implement, ordinarily we would be closing those notices tomorrow. Another question, do we want to confirm restaurant participation? You know, if you build it, will they come? And so, we, we have done outreach, the Chamber of Commerce supported this effort, and put out an additional survey, our very own council member Marty Medina walked the Ave and provided a, a document to staff with the results of his outreach. And in general sense, some businesses are for it, I believe in this section. We have two businesses that have said a definite yes, one business that has said a no, and another business that may potentially be interested. But while we haven't had a positive outreach for all businesses, what I want to tell the council is, that does not mean that they will not participate, but the question I'm posing to the city council is, do we want to, before we activate, confirm that the restaurants are actually going to participate and set out tables and have that confirmation, or would you like staff to launch the program, do the outreach, and treat it as a pilot, and hopefully our businesses participate? Not in this section, but from the survey that we have from the council member anecdotal information from staff, and initial preliminary results from the chamber survey, some businesses are okay with takeout, others think that it is too dangerous for their employees, and some businesses say that they have tried outside dining, but their customers were not receptive to it, and so they're applying to go right now. So, I think the summary is, it's missed, and we cannot get a definitive answer right now that the businesses have a lot, are supporting it or against it, and so it's really a policy for the city council, and staff will work to implement whatever your direction is. Re-routing the Samtrans bus, this is unfortunately a bit of, not bad news, but essentially no news as of yet, and that we have not been able to confirm a plan with Samtrans to reroute the bus. That does take a little time, they need to holster the stop, they need to advertise it and make sure that the map is directing the driver and everyone in their system knows that. So unfortunately, I do think that this is the thing that would prevent us, lest we have a break this tomorrow, would prevent us really from doing it this weekend. But staff does feel that it's possible, because council may remember that the Samtrans bus here was rerouted when we did our road reconstruction project two years ago along the Ave. However, that was a process, and Samtrans was a part of that project for, for several months leading up to it, and so they were able to reroute the bus very efficiently before we began the project. In the outreach we've done over the last two weeks, we have not gotten a definitive confirmation that that can occur. We feel confident that it can, we just need to let the system work itself. The other question that I would like to pose to council is that if the restrictions change and restaurants are allowed to partially open indoors, are we going to hold the event? And I'm posing this just so that we have clear direction, that if council says go, we're go, and if the restrictions change, we're still going to go. For how many weeks is the question? Do we want to do it as one pilot, or does council want to authorize it to begin as soon as we can through a four-week period, maybe to, maybe clip it at the end of September, maybe go for a certain number of weeks? And the other question is funding, and so it's $6,300 per week, certainly we can afford a pilot. I'm not asking the city council if you would like to proceed for a allocation of funds. This would be treated similar to the other things that we've done for COVID-19, where through the ELC, we will authorize the expenditure. Those monies are, as you know, going either against the city's general fund fund balance, or we are working on a plan to allocate them to CARES Act or other federal dollars, federal and state dollars that we are receiving for, for COVID-19, and some of this may very well apply for one of those funding sources. And so, the summary there, the council would like us to begin, but don't look at funding as the reason why we cannot implement a pilot immediately, or as soon as the boxes are checked. And so, with that, I want to close out the presentation and open for questions and direction from council.
There we go, sorry. Okay, thank you, city manager, for the report, and let's see, hold on, I think we have, with council's permission, we do have a couple of folks in the audience, I'd like to be able to ask them to come in now, and so they can offer their comments, in case they need to do other things. City clerk, if you could bring in.
Tim O'Brien? Hi, Tim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. Yes, I think it'd be, I'm in support of this, closing down the San Mateo Avenue. It'd be great for the community, as well as the businesses. And as I said, I think it'd be a good timeout for the, you know, the community and for San Bruno as well, and for helping the businesses out. I think they'll really appreciate it. And I've had the opportunity to have experience in Burlingame. And I think it was great. It really brought a lot of people out. You have to take into consideration the COVID-19, but I'm in support of it. And I think it'd be a great thing to do, just to try it out a couple of times and see how it works, and get back to the report on how it goes. And I think, I remember San Bruno used to have street festivals, and it was a great timeout. This was going back years ago. And I think this would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Tim.
Okay. Next, we have John Cavarian. Hi, John. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, thank for this opportunity to speak in support of the San Mateo Avenue street closure. And also, I congratulate the city staff for a great presentation. Thank you. As a president of the Broadway Business Improvement District, I would like to make some recommendations to the city in regards to the street closure. We started as a pilot program on Broadway. We gave a 72-hour notice to the public in advance. And then the second week, the notice went to 24 hours. The community started getting used to it. And when you do too far in advance of a notice, if you don't have the signs with large fonts, many times, customers will drive away thinking they cannot park that moment or that day. So we encourage cities to do 24 hours, so it doesn't harm regular business in advance. And also, on Broadway, we don't use barricades to block the street. We use A-frames. Broadway is a thoroughfare. And knock on wood, A-frames have worked well. They're cheaper to use. And we have not had any incidents the past seven weeks. It brings the cost down. So those are some of my suggestions. And I would recommend that the signs, no parking signs, are in large fonts, so people see the time and the day, so they know it's not for the day they're parking. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for your support on this issue.
Thank you for your comments, John.
Okay. I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay.
Actually, one just popped up. We have Claudia Quinn.
It's Sean Quinn.
Oh, hello. Whenever you're ready, Sean.
Yeah, I'm ready to go. I'm in support of the street closure, too. And if one thing is, we've kind of left out the other end of the street up where Cafe Leon's is, and there's West Coast Cafe, and there's, I think, a Filipino area. If there's some way we could get some kind of direction to help them, we want to have the whole street, I think, benefit from this, even though we're not going to close the thoroughfare all the way. But we want to try and, let's get everybody's businesses up. I mean, it's a tax base, obviously. So I think we just need to be mindful of the other end, too. It's not just for one section. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Sean.
Okay. We have one more hand. Actually, it looks like Tim O'Brien's hand is up. Bring him in. It might be Raina.
Hi, good evening. Yes, it is Raina. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for the time, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I totally agree with Mr. Quinn, what he just stated, that we have to support West Coast Cafe. And that places towards the end of San Mateo Avenue. And I totally support for the closure of the street. And I think that in San Bruno, we need to take risks. We need to take opportunity and enhance downtown. We all, I like what West Coast Cafe is doing, having the sidewalk. And if that gets, the city gets, the street gets shut down, I think more people will be inclined to come and basically dine outside. So let's take a chance, and I know it's going to work. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope you consider opening, closing the street. Thank you.
Thank you for comments, Raina.
And next, we have Claire Luna.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm in support of the closure. A lot of people have been stuck at home. And, you know, San Bruno, you know, usually you can go to Tan Fran and kind of walk around the mall with your kids and whatnot. And since it's closed, we can't really do that. I've kind of already been to San Bruno Park. But there's other areas where I definitely want to take my kids, because they've been inside for a long time, because, you know, the parks are closed and whatnot. Sometimes beaches are closed, too. So it'd be a really nice thing for families to do on a Saturday, to go to lunch and kind of walk around San Mateo Avenue. So that would be great. And I'm sure other families are in that position, too, where they need to kind of take their kids out. And so, yes, I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claire, for your comments. I'm not seeing anybody else this time.
Neither do I.
Okay. With that, I'm going to bring it back to council and council member Mason.
Yeah. Thank you for putting that presentation together. I did want to ask the city manager about, you had meant, I think, I'm not sure how you said it, but that some of the businesses are already participating in outdoor dining. And so I was wondering which ones. I know on the map, I didn't see Nori and Atlas Pizza, but I know that they both have sidewalk dining available. Mari Mar, I know they have sidewalk dining available in Grand Leader. But the Korean and the Japanese, I think there's two Japanese restaurants. I haven't, and Boiling, Beijing, I don't think I've seen any sidewalk dining. Are any of them interested? Or has anyone expressed support in that area that just hasn't set up yet?
Council member Mason, you know your San Mateo Avenue is. All the businesses you mentioned with the addition of La Paloma, the Mexican restaurant on the corner of Cains and San Mateo Avenue.
Okay, great. And then just piggybacking off of one of the, the public speaker, is the rotation a possibility of doing, if we end up approving more than one weekend, one half of the San Mateo Avenue, and then the next weekend, the other half?
Yes, we can do that, absolutely. I'm calling, because you mentioned the speakers, and one of the speakers did mention A-frames and the 24-hour posting. And so the police chief is made to address that at the council's desire. But we can certainly rotate.
So I'm in support of this. I think it would be just, I understand we're in the middle of an international pandemic, and public health is the most important thing that we need to deal with and make sure that we're addressing. But per Ms., per Claire Luna's comment, I think it's really important that the public has an opportunity to get out. And why not get out and support our small business while we're out there? So that's my comment. And I would love to hear from the chief. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, or city clerk, can you bring in Ryan Johansson?
He is. He's in the room.
I'm glad to ask this question, because we had this very same discussion. So Chief Johansson.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Ryan Johansson, your chief of police. Just to comment on a couple of items that have been brought up from a public safety standpoint. The reason for the recommendation of the concrete K-rails is because that would be the industry standard in order to protect pedestrians and anyone who's out on foot in a roadway where cars normally travel. I know it's hard to contemplate having to think of the unthinkable, but certainly in the recent past, all over the world, we have had incidents in which cars are used as weapons against human beings. And unfortunately, somewhat for me, it is my job as a representative of the city to plan for the worst-case scenario. And if heaven forbid, we decided to cut corners and put in less protective barricades, and the unthinkable did happen, I think we would have a great deal of difficulty explaining why we made that decision. And I would encourage you not to just follow suit with the fact that you've seen lesser protections in other cities, meaning that it's the right thing to do. Not to call those cities out, because I'm not sure what their planning process was, or whether or not police departments were brought into the equation. But this would be the industry standard. For any kind of an event where you are putting pedestrians out on a roadway where vehicles normally travel and will have access from adjacent roadways, is a concrete hard barrier that will stop a vehicle from traveling down that roadway and harming people in the event that intentionally or otherwise someone decided to do so. And so that's the reason for the concrete K-rail recommendation over the A-frames or even water barriers. The water barriers are another grade up above A-frame or just simple cones or stanchions, but they will not stop a vehicle in the event that someone is driving through there towards a bunch of people who are seated eating in the middle of the street. And so that's the recommendation there. There was also a comment about a lower notice period on the no parking. And I will say that the speaker's comments are, by my experience, pretty accurate. When we put out signs ahead of time, frequently people don't stop to read all the specifics on the signs. They think, oh, I can't park here, even though the parking, no parking doesn't take effect for maybe two or three days. And that could hurt businesses down there in the area, which I'm certainly sensitive to. However, this is a legal requirement to authorize towing. So we cannot post less than 72 hours in advance and still physically remove those vehicles legally if we need to. So the 72 hours is the minimum in advance. Those things need to be posted in order for us to actually clear the street. Hopefully, that answers the two questions that I was asked to address, but I'm, of course, happy to answer any others that may have come up that are in my purview.
Thank you, chief. Other questions from council? Council member Davis?
I definitely wanted to hear from council member Medina on his feedback, just sort of get his summary of the businesses. But my intention has never been to not support this program if the businesses want this, right? I mean, I'm here to support the businesses. I'm here to make decisions that says to a business, I can be successful because the city has offered this. That's my number one. And so if I can hear from staff that what we're hearing is that the majority of the businesses want this, and that this is going to be a benefit to them, and it's not going to deter business, I'm all for that. And maybe, like a lot of people are saying, let's just try it out. Let's pilot it out. Let's see if they, they will come. You know, is that saying, you know, you build it, and they will come? And we can go from there. But again, I'd like to hear councillor Medina's firsthand viewpoint.
Well, what works out well is council member Medina's hand is up.
Let me lower it before I forget. So again, the preliminary walks were pretty much at the height of the flare-up of COVID. And the data of all the locations, I was all provided to staff. And it's my understanding they're going back out to confirm, have people change their minds. Since walking the street there, we've seen increased activity, even without the street being closed. Mari Mar has an incredible amount of business going on right now, from their frontage all the way over to Grand Leader, who closes at six. So Nori's outside, Atlas is outside, La Paloma's outside. And I think that with our restaurants and businesses seeing that the city's really moving forward, that they'll be more encouraged. And so at the minimum, I would say we would try for a couple of weeks to see how it's building, evaluate in two weeks how the public is reacting, and seeing if it can be built upon by more restaurants and businesses deciding to try it out. So my question for staff is a little bit more of a breakdown in the costs, because I'm really surprised that we don't have any K-rail, a city our size, that they're not available. And if they're not available, then we should be purchasing them, because you do need those for many different reasons. And if it, with the breakdown on actually buying compared to renting, and if the street has to have a opening to allow the 20-foot clearance, so the K-rail's being moved, we're having our operator stand by waiting to move it from one side or the other in the case that a car needed to go through. Is that how it's working? I'm not familiar with how we would try to close that with the K-rail.
Sure. Council member, let me address that. So a couple of points. Can totally provide the breakdown to the city council, and will do subsequent to this meeting, of all the costs. With regard to the hard closure, there are currently two versions of that. One is to completely K-rail off Cains at San Mateo Ave and Cains at San Bruno Avenue, I'm sorry, Cains, Cains at San Mateo Avenue and Angus at San Mateo Avenue. So to K-rail both of those, and have the emergency vehicle access route be through the parking lot off Massan. And so there can be a softer closure there that is staff. And typically, when you have your soft closure, you have an officer there that can hopefully intervene if there is a vehicle trying to enter where they should not. If the closure, if the emergency vehicle access point is actually on San Mateo Avenue at Cains or Angus, there will likely be a vehicle parked in that 20-foot space that can be moved when an emergency vehicle has to go down the street. Now, yes, that does create a softer point, but it is an easier access point for emergency vehicles. But staff will work on that and develop a plan that is appropriate. And with regard to owning K-rails or buying K-rails, we rent them. We have contractors on standby for our emergency projects that happen. If we have a big thing in the middle of the night, we have an emergency contractor that can bring that out. But we have sort of a, we're a smallish agency, and so we've never invested in those. And when we do our larger projects, those are typically a cost of the project, and the contractor has them. And so the public may say, what do you mean you have K-rail? You did a road project for a couple of months, and there was K-rail there. Well, that was actually the contractor's K-rail, and that cost was folded into the project. We can talk to staff about purchasing K-rail. A brief conversation is that it's sort of a three-pronged issue. It's find the K-rail, store the K-rail, and have the equipment to move the K-rail.
Right.
So for our normal operations, we have, we do not have that ability on the air.
Got it. How much space does each restaurant get? Would that be dependent on how many, obviously, are participating? But if it did catch on, they're allowed to be like, kind of directly in front of their store, and they get like parking spaces? Or how does that work?
Yeah. It's going to be different depending on the restaurant. Sometimes they have restaurants next door to each other. Other times, you have a space where they can have a larger seating area. You know, given that area, I think there'll be a natural flow, given where the parking lots are. But the space available to restaurants for seating, because you will have that 20-foot path down the center of San Mateo Avenue, will not be the whole roadway. It will essentially be a little bit beyond the parking strip. So essentially, the parking strip and the sidewalk is what will be available for that outdoor dining area. And so it will not be tables set up in the middle of the roadway.
Right. It's not curb-to-curb, but it definitely will be the parking spaces.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think... I think that answers most of my questions. I, I think we'll find out. I'm not too sure if moving it back and forth is, is probably the best idea, but, um, because the majority of the restaurants are there. If, if there are two peseos that are, um, further south that we should be able to offer up for those restaurants, that they can go ahead and use those without a street closure at all, that would save money and also be available to them, uh, be a lot cheaper for them to, to do that or for everyone to do that. But I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think, I think, um, we go ahead and give it a shot. Make sure that there's plenty of signs, remind everybody, uh, A-frame signs to wear their masks. And it, it really isn't a place to really come out and play, right? This is a place to come out and eat. So I wanted to be really clear with that. So it's, it's not the place to bring your kids to kind of ride bikes and, and kind of hang out. That, that would be better suited at a park. So I just want to make it clear that there aren't any high expectations, that this is a gathering play space. This is a place that we're providing, um, at our cost to help our restaurants out. And, um, if I'm mistaken, then, then please help, uh, please correct me. But, but I just wanted to make that, to question that, to make sure that everybody's clear on, on, on what is supposed to happen here and how we're supposed to behave.
Sure. So to the, to the mayor, I'll, I'll take that one. I think I heard a unanimous chorus from all councilmembers in our one-on-ones and in these meetings. I think everyone wants activity downtown and everyone wants that sort of classic street fair atmosphere on the ass. But I think we all recognize and we know that that's not safe right now, right? And what we're talking about is providing a street closure to provide outdoor dining. So an increased area for some of the, probably the restaurants that are already setting up outdoor dining, give them more space to stretch out, uh, on Saturday and hopefully more restaurants will participate. What we are not doing is having a large community gathering or anything that resembles a street fair because large gatherings are not allowed now, nor are they advisable based on our county health officer and the CDC. And so I, I think your summary was absolutely, absolutely correct. The information that we put out to the community will certainly convey that because it is not the place to gather.
Last question, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So with, with this additional dining, hopefully there will be, um, the additional trash will, is expected to be taken by each restaurant? Or are they going to try to cram them in the garbage cans that are downtown? What is the expectation on and responsibility for that?
Right. So again, because we're not doing a street fair, there should not be much more trash than a restaurant would have had during their normal operations if they were operating fully indoor. Uh, and so we fully expect for the restaurants to do setup and clean up and take care of their trash at home.
So thank you. I'm, I'm in support of this.
Any further questions, comments from council? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Salazar? Oh, and then councilmember Mason, I apologize.
Um, yeah, so I think this is really looking promising and I wanted to thank staff for that presentation. It's nice that it's, it's starting to gel and I have been hearing a lot of interest from the public in doing something like this. And it seemed like the, you know, the response from the business community was tepid and perhaps it's, it's improving. So definitely appreciate that feedback and reaching back out to them again. One question I had in terms of their participation was around whether there is some level of commitment from the city that would make it, um, more beneficial to the business community, meaning that if we say we're only going to do this once and try it out or twice, is it worth it for them to add staff to help them, you know, move their furniture around and accommodate everything and, and bring in a waitstaff to, to help with the process? So, um, you know, I, I think there might be some level of commitment there that, um, that if we were to put that forward, might make the businesses a little more comfortable with participating. Again, if it doesn't pan out for them or then, you know, they probably wouldn't want to continue doing it anyway. But, um, it does seem like that there is a bit of a startup cost for them. So I want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration when, when presenting this to them and basically setting the expectations correctly. And, uh, you know, with seeing that, you know, that we did get some, some public participation on this meeting and just from what I've heard from the public, uh, I, I think the public is interested in, in going out there. But, but I think councilmember Medina's comments were very appropriate in that, um, we do have to be careful about how we advertise what this is and what it's not. And I had a question also about what, um, what role the city will take in terms of providing guidance on how tables should be configured, whether, you know, that the spacing, um, is, um, you know, are we going to limit, um, how many, how many tables are placed, you know, what the density is per restaurant? Or are we leaving that up to the restaurants? And then also in terms of enforcement of, of the patrons' actions, you know? So face coverings are still required while people are out there. Obviously not while they're eating, but while they're in the area. And would we expect the police department to enforce, um, you know, either clustering of people or, you know, non-dining related activities in the area and, and the use of face coverings?
City manager?
So we, we, uh, we will have CSOs present, um, and I, I do think that we will provide soft reminders by enforcement. Hanging out citations, I, I think will be, will be difficult. Um, and so I think we would do that in line with how we, um, have typically enforced all, all of these, uh, health measures, which is lead with education first and hope for compliance and then take the necessary enforcement, enforcement steps if there is not compliance. What we have resoundly seen is that, uh, people in our community, uh, care about each other and comply. As we've talked about before with enforcement, there are a number of exemptions frankly that make enforcement challenging. Uh, and setting up for outdoor dining, people will be eating and drinking. And so I think we can expect to see a number of people with their masks off. And, and that is a part of this. With regards to the other portion of your question, providing guidance, we will certainly, uh, ensure that businesses have all the appropriate links to not only our local health department regulations, uh, but the state and the CDC guidance. We will not be promulgating new regulations or distance for tables. For this event, uh, we will make sure that restaurants have access to the information and, um, provide any appropriate support that, that we can. But we're essentially, um, you know, setting the table. We're, we're closing the streets and we're allowing restaurants to, um, expand. But we will not be promulgating new rules.
Okay. And, and the, the current requirements around outdoor dining require people to have, have face coverings on unless they're seated at a table and dining. Is that, is that correct?
Unless they're eating or drinking. So you can be seating, seated waiting on your food, but you're still, uh, supposed to wear your mask.
Okay. All right. Um, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely interested in, in, in seeing this, uh, you know, prosper. I think it would be great if we can, any little boost that we can give to our, to our businesses and any relief we can bring to, to our residents would be definitely welcome. So, um, I'm in favor of trying this out.
And Javon, you may need to bring back the slide because I know you'd, you'd asked a few questions. I want to go, uh, I think we're, as you said, we're all in support of it as you, you've probably heard from various of us, maybe five different times, uh, on your one-on-ones. But, um, going to the, uh, the A frames. So, um, for me personally, you know, I don't know what my colleagues feel, but if our police chief is making a recommendation for safety of the residents and downtown in the community, then I'm apt to concur with him and don't leave anything to chance in our unique year that we're having. 72-hour notice, I think he's addressed that, is that, that is required in order to tow a vehicle. He said confirm restaurant participation. Um, I didn't quite hear that answered. I mean, I know what council Medina has done. Um, so I think we have some, we don't. Oh, restrictions change restaurants are allowed to open. Okay, so we will wait for that. You're, you're asking how many weeks in funding? So your estimate is about $6,300 per event for a day? And, um, and then how many weeks? I think the council needs to maybe come up with some direction for staff. Is it a prior for two particular Saturdays? Is it for three? Is it, I think it's one of the city manager's questions for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I mean, I'd like to, 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 to go for a month. But I also want an option like if it's just not happening, like after a couple of weeks. Like, we have to make a decision to, or give staff the decision to, you know, like, there's two restaurants out there, you know, and, and five tables. I don't, I don't think that's worth it. But, but I'm hopeful that it won't get there, but, but you never know, right? I mean, things are, I looked at the weather, it should be fine through this weekend, but you know, who knows, how is it going to change, you know? What if there's, you know, another, anyway, there's a ton of reasons. I think that it'd be great, we can go a month, but we need to really reevaluate it in a couple of weeks to see if, if it's still kind of a thing and it's increasing or it isn't a thing and it's pretty much dead. So, um, I'm hopeful that it's going to work out. I'll go back and talk to the restaurants and now I can say, hey, we're actually doing it. You know, not like before where it was kind of like, hey, would you be interested? It's like, hey, we're closing the street for you. Get your tables out there and give it a shot and we'll see you on Saturday.
Okay. And I like your, um, like you said, go a couple because you have to have some continuity. And then we, we, you know, city manager, are you looking at this Saturday? Or can that be done or is that too quick?
I think realistically, the fastest we can implement would be on the 19th. Uh, and so that is the 19th of September. If council would like us to report back, we can report back, uh, on your meeting on the 22nd for how the 19th went. And then unfortunately, we, we will not be in our regular meeting again until October 13th. So there'll be a number of Saturdays, um, unless we discover a special meeting if we were to call it off. And so we can certainly do the 19th, the 26th, the 3rd and the 10th. Or, but some subset of that. Uh, and not that I want the power to cancel, to cancel this, uh, to cancel it without coming back to council, but that is one option, which is allows staff the ability to, um, terminate if attendance is not appropriate or we can schedule a special meeting.
Okay, colleagues, are we okay with the 19th?
To the chair?
Uh, councilmember Davis?
So, yeah, I, I concur with what Marty said. I think, yes, let's go with the 19th and let's give staff the ability to cancel should they need to, if it's really not successful. We don't need to wait and have a special meeting to cancel it if you're only getting five tables out there, I think, like Marty said. I think if you feel like we're not really sure if we should cancel it, you can either have a special meeting. I will meet anytime, any day because I think it's important that we can concur and get, come to the consensus.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to see the four Saturdays, starting with the 19th and ending on the 10th. The 10th, I think, is normally a three-day weekend. So I think that we'll have, we'll have an idea by then whether people are coming out or not. Um, I also agree with the chief's recommendation around the barricades. And I did want to ask, I did want to ask a question. Sorry, I had my hand up earlier. But, um, what if you're not a restaurant? So I know it says outdoor dining retail. So if you're not a restaurant or you're a restaurant that doesn't choose to use the space in front, does that open it up to somebody else?
Councilmember, was that a question for me or your colleagues?
No, that's a question for you, city manager.
So I'm going to talk to the back. I, I think that's a policy, um, question for the city council. The, uh, in, in one of the opening slides, I mentioned, I, I, it said businesses and restaurants, being that if you're, if you're, if you so, if some, if you're just a regular retailer, uh, you can participate. We had not thought to extend it to other businesses on the Ave that are not within the designated closure area. Given the likelihood that a restaurant that's not in that area would probably not sort of pass staff running a block or two to serve and set up their tables that far away. And by offering it to retailers that are not on that given section, it starts to feel more like a outdoor fair that we're inviting people to or a farmer's market. And that's those type of large gatherings aren't really occurring outside of limited things for farmer's markets because of food.
I think, um, I was thinking more, I guess along the lines of if, if you have two restaurants next door to each other, I agree with you. I think, I don't know that people are going to be wanting to run back and forth down the avenue. But if you have two restaurants next to each other and one chooses not to have outdoor dining and the other one does, is there anything stopping us from saying you can take more space in front of the other restaurant?
No, from a staff perspective, we will be totally flexible. I mean, if, you know, the street's going to be closed and as long as they're not a competing business, you know, we'll work with them to allow them all the space they need.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm hearing is that for 9/19, uh, per your recommendation, city manager, to begin then. I've heard going to through 10/10, um, with the understanding, as councilmember Davis said too, if, if it is not something that's finding itself, uh, for whatever reason, weather, whatever, whatever's going on, that, um, if the staff feels that, uh, you know, the 60, the, the, the time and the resources being put in are, are not of, of, of a benefit in, in what we'd hoped to bring, then, you know, you can always email council or I think we, we trust you to make that decision. And as councilmember Davis said too, uh, if you need to call, um, that's fine. Uh, meaning have a, have a special meeting or something. City manager, have we given you enough direction?
Yes, let's, I want to clarify a couple of things.
Please.
I'm, uh, I am fully confident that staff can execute for the 19th. Uh, what I do want to offer as a caveat, and so I don't want to sort of announce to the, to the community that it will occur on the 19th, is that we still need to confirm the rerouting of the Sam Fran's bus. Um, and so subject to that, I think we can execute on, on, on the 19th and cross all the i's and dot all the t's. And I, I want, I think it would be nice to have clarity on direction from council. Uh, we're essentially saying a four-week pilot. So, um, going through, hopefully likely to begin on the 19th, uh, going through the 10th of October. I think we should have it clear, if attendance, uh, is not high and it looks like there is not, that the community and the businesses are not taking advantage of the pilot, the decision to council, are you okay with staff, uh, making that, that call or do you want a special meeting?
I personally am fine with council, uh, with staff making that determination.
Me too.
Mr. Medina has given a thumbs up. Uh, okay.
Yeah, we got this far. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Okay, you've got all in concurrence.
So I think we're going to, um, I think we have a public comment too.
We already did public comment on this? Anything else? City manager? He muted himself. Um, okay. So unless there's anything else, we're going to move. Okay, so unless there's anything else, we're gonna move on to item number eight, comments from councilmembers. First item, item A, Marty, councilmember Marty Medina requests a whole study session to review the city's streets sweeping enforcement policies.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm, I am requesting a study session to examine our street sweeping policies and to determine how we can fairly and efficiently improve them. During my eighteen years of living in the heart of San Bruno, my friends, family, and I have received our share of street sweeping parking tickets. I grew to accept this as being necessary to reduce the chances of flooding in the avenues. So tonight, there are two policies that I'm interested in reviewing, and I'll start with the easy one. Can street sweeping enforcement be temporarily suspended in neighborhoods affected by city-approved construction? I request this based on the following reasons. Another phase to replace water and sewer mains have started this year, east of El Camino and west of Huntington Avenue. Parking spaces are already scarce in these older neighborhoods. Three, more residents are home due to COVID-19 and there are less places to park on the street. Four, additional streets have recently been added to the street sweeping enforcement near downtown. All of these things result in more added stress to our neighborhoods with parking shortages. So I did bring this up to the city manager, I did get emails on it, but it was necessary to bring it to council to see if, is a study session necessary to ask that the sweeping, street sweeping enforcement be suspended in these neighborhoods? So, so that's, I guess the, the first question is, to our city attorney or city manager, can, can we direct the city manager to, to suspend the enforcement in these neighborhoods?
Let me take that now, I'll get backed up by the city attorney or the police chief. So councilmember Medina, you did ask that question, and we, I, I did look into that matter, and we currently have a practice that we have not implemented for our own city projects, but we can. The police department and the police chief have already looked into issuing a temporary order to cease parking enforcement when we have city construction projects, and so we can define it where, if we are taking away parking for a significant amount of time, we can have a, a, a order within the police department that will go out to those that issued tickets, given the city project to limit enforcement. And so that have, that, that power already rests with staff and brought that up and we're already, and in my email box, I have a draft order that the police department drafted a template, and so I think we can take care of that one. Your, your latter one for a study session, I will pause now and let you take the next step on that.
Great, thank, thank you for, for that answer. I think that's gonna provide relief to a number of residents here that are really having trouble finding parking. It's great that we're replacing the water and sewer mains, just that it's no parking on both sides of these small streets, and, and I wanna thank you for that. And now to address the larger, more complicated policy question. Are we efficiently performing street sweeping in our neighborhoods? On our website, we, we have stated that street sweeping is occurring all across San Bruno. And, and as we know, it is being primarily enforced on the east side of town. And over the years, we've heard that it's due because of the potential flooding issues that are, which I believe in, which are down in the avenues. However, this also brings up, is it really fair? And I'm proposing the following. Wherever street sweeping is needed, it should be enforced. If it is not needed, then street sweeping should be suspended. And if it's ineffective, then something needs to change. And in the study session, we would examine these things so that we can determine what changes provide the best outcomes. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And I wanted to thank city manager for this new process. This did not show up on my high priorities in the beginning of the year. It sparked by residents under this condition, and we can provide them some short-term relief during construction. And, and the question is, when there's no enforcement and cars are parked on both sides of the street, what's the point of a street sweeper going down the middle of the street? So that's an efficiency problem, a budgeting issue, that if that's not effective, then that worker could be somewhere else, because we know that there's a lot of things that need to get done. So I'll, I'll leave it with my colleagues to see their interest, and if they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer whatever I can.
So, thank you, councilmember. For, for me, I, I think a study session would be of value, and to even expand a little bit. You know, there may come a time for storm drainage. We have requirements the state is going to say that we have to meet. And so it may become a necessity to have enforcement throughout the city. It, it's a possibility. It's been talked about some time ago, but we, we have to examine everything, I think, from start to finish. To my memory, you know, I know sometimes it's, that us here, this council enacted, it was enacted back in nineteen eighty-two, so I could not vote then, so it, I was a young man, but like all of you, young people. And in two thousand and eleven, my memory is that it was reviewed, and what, what did change was the hours. So it used to be eight AM to ten AM, and it went from nine AM to eleven AM, because I and others had heard is, you know, that eight to nine, just whether you're trying to get out of the house and then you have to go remove the car to run home to find some spot. It is, it is very challenging, and I know where my grandmother used to live, you know, back in those days, the street was clear. A street sweeper could go down with not a problem. A lot of those streets today, that is not the case anymore. And sometimes street sweepers are going down the center of the street. So I think from an efficiency element, from the store drain element, I think also it just helps for us, you know, again, my, my belief is two thousand and eleven was the last time it really was looked at, what the true costs were, have it just do citywide, which was a million plus back then, with the signs and the enforcement and all of those things. So I would, I would support having a study session, because I think it, it addresses those bigger issues, questions, and a lot of people still ask the question, why? Why, why is it happening on my street? And when I, on our, my street, it is daunting. I'll tell you, if you don't move your car by a certain point, you're, you're walking a few blocks. So that's just the reality, so it's, it's gotten more congested, but that's some of my input. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. You know, I, I talked about this process a couple of years ago with a former councilmember and former city manager, because as a councilmember, even when I came on, I didn't really understand the process and how you brought things forward. And even to this day, I'm not really happy with the process, because it shouldn't be one councilmember's great idea to sit down and come forward and say, okay, let's move forward with this great idea, because it's with the hot item that that one councilmember has. But that we have two opportunities twice a year to come together and discuss and to brainstorm and to come up with a list of priorities, and from that list of priorities, take off the top three, four, or five items and let staff work on those things. And then the list continues, and the list has those other items. And so now you have a list of fifty items, and now item fifty-one comes forward, because it's just one item by itself, and we're being said, well, that's, this should be the priority. So I, I think it's hard for me to make a decision, and I don't like making these types of decisions, when we're just picking one item to discuss tonight and say, hmm, should staff work on this item? Because, folks, there are a lot of priorities in the city. And when we talk, talk about storm drain, let's talk about how we're going to cover our costs for storm, storm maintenance and storm drains and all the things we're doing to implement that are required by law. Those are my big concerns when you wanna talk about stormwater and how we get, get that issue dropped and pressed. I, I completely and a hundred percent agree with councilmember Medina. When we have a construction project going on in, in an area and you're taking away half the parking, it's unacceptable. In fact, I'm surprised somebody hasn't thought about that particular issue prior. When you live in it and you breathe it, you see these things that continually to be an issue. And thankful for councilmember Medina, who actually continues to advocate for his neighborhood and in those areas where you've got vehicles, construction vehicles, taking up a whole block when they really could have taken up a half block in another area away from the resident's neighborhood. So we, we, we as staff have constantly, and members of the councils have constantly been looking at ways to even improve that area, clean up the construction sites, compile multiple pieces of equipment in a condensed area versus spreading it all over and taking up all the parking that exists in a, in a very small neighborhood. So I, it's, it's not that it's not a great idea, it's a great idea, and it's something we should be talking about it. In fact, in a one-on-one, we talked about the same thing, about bringing this, this item forward this year, but guess what happened? So many other priorities came forward and it didn't make the top ten or top twenty council priorities. So I just think as a council, we have the obligation to look at our priorities and determine what the, what is the priority? If, if the construction piece is something that staff can implement, it's, it's already ready to go with it, that's great. The other piece that requires a study session requires staff time, is that the piece we really focus on this year? Or do we go back to our list and look at what we wanna add on top of the already full plate that staff has? You know, you know, it's tough to, to project manage a number of things that are going on, and I give it to staff for always having to listen to our great ideas and some things that never even make it to a council meeting, but that we request and we suggest and can do this, and everybody's gotta come up with these great ideas. We've got to prioritize that, and it's, I think I've said that enough. Thanks.
I don't know, the vice mayor wants to go first?
Yeah, Vice President Salazar.
Thank you. So I, I just heard a couple of, a couple of people make some excellent points, so I definitely agree with councilmember Medina's, you know, his, his observations, and I've heard a lot of the same things, and there's still a lot of questions about why here and not there, and what's the point of just running a street sweeper down the middle of the street? And I think that those questions come up a lot. And I think we actually discussed it quite a few times in the past, but obviously not to everybody's satisfaction, so there's definitely some, some more, you know, digging that we need to do there, and we probably need to come up with some better, better communication around what's happening and, you know, some better evaluation that backs up what those decisions are. But at the same point, I mean, we, we do have to be sensitive to, to a process, and you know, there definitely is a lot on the plate right now, and, and I know this, it's definitely, like I said, it's come up before, didn't make the priority list, I was, I was thinking, I was reading some posts on, on, on the internet, and there was some talk about a citizens academy, which is one of the ideas that I brought to the strategic initiative session, and it didn't make the cut, and I was a little disappointed, but you know, there's, there's always next year, there's always an opportunity to, to keep improving, and, and, you know, I, I don't think we should be rigid with that list, you know, there should be some opportunity to revisit it and see if, you know, if something has changed dramatically and needs to move on to the list or move higher up on the priority list, but I don't think this is one that we're gonna be able to fix easily, and I'm, I'm just reaching back into my memory and thinking about some of the prior, prior discussions we've had around this and some of the points that were raised, and it, I, I'm wondering if maybe just having staff revisit some of those previous discussions and bring back some of those points that were raised, because I know that there are some, we have some requirements for, for running those street sweepers, so we can't just stop doing it. And, you know, the, the effectiveness, I think, was also addressed in, in one of those prior presentations, so maybe just to revisit some of that, that previous literature in, in a, in a staff report, and then that could come back to council, and then we could determine at that point if, if there's anything in there that could turn into an action that we could then decide it's important enough now for, for some reason to add that to our, our priority list. But, you know, I don't think a, anything has changed dramatically from, you know, what we did earlier this year, and that would require us to, to re-evaluate that priority list at this point. And so it's, I, I understand it's a problem, and, and I know it's gonna be an ongoing problem, but I don't know that it's, that it's evolved to the point where now it's, it's more critical than it was at, at the beginning of, of our process. And so I, I, I think the, the idea of relaxing the, the construction enforcement, that's an excellent suggestion, and I would definitely be in, in favor of having staff pursue that portion of it.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I support, I support the idea. I think, I find it confusing myself, and there have been a lot of various posts around equity issues of street sweeping in certain places and not others. I know on Cherry, under the freeway, it's dirty and it's unclear why the street sweeper maybe goes around, maybe there's no tow, there's no, I don't know, the cars don't have to move every couple of hours, I really don't know. I just know that it's dirty, and I think it would be worth it just to understand the process and the benefit of these public study sessions, is that's not just us, it's the public that can tune in, who have been very vocal in some cases in determining, you know, why certain streets are getting these street sweeping and others aren't. So I would support, whether it be staff bringing back past presentations, if there's still the process that's in, that's being implemented, or if it's a new presentation, to me, as long as the information is timely and it's what staff is doing today, I'd be really curious to know the process. Well, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Medina, then I had a question for the city manager.
Yeah, and I, and I, I really appreciate when we have discussions like this, where, where we're really collaborating, and I'm, I wanna remain respectful of the process that we put together. And when this construction happens, and if you drive down on some of these streets, I mean, the whole street parking's taken, right? So, so that spurred to go ahead and ask the bigger question. So I'll leave it at that, and coincidentally, councilmember Mason, Cherry Avenue was the last thing I wanted to talk about, because a number of residents on, on, on social media, and, and social media is important, I mean, that's where people want, go to first. People are asking for street sweeping there because it's turned into kind of a RV hangout spot, and people are talking about the nastiest things that are put in the gutter. And this flat area has, has an increase of trash and debris, and, and looking at adding street sweeping at that spot, if we were gonna have a, a bigger study session, or maybe staff to go ahead and do it, I'm not saying drop everything right now, I, I, the priorities that we had, we agreed to, but to, and I appreciate everybody's suggestion in seeming that we go ahead and have staff kinda come back and refresh what was said and, and come back, and, and then we could reevaluate at that time. So I just wanted to thank everybody for, for having an open mind and, and being aware of just how weird the whole street sweeping is. So thank you very much.
And then city manager, listening to my, the colleagues too, they don't wanna, we don't wanna create a lot of extra work, especially if there's already things that have been there. Even going back into the report is to, you know, to history. There is a staff report, I think, in two thousand and eleven that gives the history of how, why it, it has happened. And how might you envision that it might be best for staff to bring back some thoughts like the, the vice mayor has said? And I, and I do know to suspend just altogether, I mean, there are, there are spots that And I do know to suspend just altogether, I mean, there are spots that people will say the car would never move if it wasn't for street sweeping. And so, you know, and Cherry, I've gotten phone calls and emails and letters on that and, you know, even I've brought up to the City Manager, why can't you have no parking between midnight and 5:00 AM, for example? You know, I don't know if that's realistic, but, you know, I'm trying to think of other options. But, City Manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, into the council. Let me begin by saying, I think that this is a policy issue that given the issues, and I've only been your City Manager a little bit over two years, but I've heard so much about street sweeping and the history behind why we enforce on one on east of El Camino, but not on west of El Camino, that I think it's some legitimate policy discussion to have and then rehab if there's continuing community sentiment and questions from council about it. But before we talk about that, I do think it's helpful to step up on balcony a little bit and talk more globally about what we're asking of staff. And so, as we know, we set up a process for city council strategic initiatives. Two years ago, we had priority focus areas and then we developed individual strategic initiatives under that. And when we met before this budget session, there were over 100 on the list. We took some off, we distilled it, and we had a priority process where you as a council raffled with all of the pressing issues facing the city and said, "Staff, here's what we want you to work on." And you decided that in June, and we committed through that process, that we as staff would report back to you every quarter and would do a hard look at the six-month mark. We've been at it for two months, right? July and August and we've just started September, so we haven't had a quarter of working on the things that you told us were your highest priority. And what we should not do through that process is continue to add things to the plate of staff every council meeting, because there's a bandwidth challenge. We can only do so much and as your City Manager, if the marker changes every council meeting and we add a new project, I'm constantly rebalancing the work of our staff and we don't make progress on the things that you have said through the budget, the most important policy document that you adopt every year is the highest marker. Now, that does not mean that urgent things that come up, critical things, that, you know, you drop everything, you move on it. And we've done some of those things and I think the two things we talked about tonight, movie theaters and looking in the outdoor dining, are the classic examples of, we have a pandemic, we want to support our businesses, add this to the work program, right? And we did that without saying, well, if we do this, then we can no longer do X, or if we do that, then Y would be delayed. But if we are going to add significant policy topics that really require work, because it's a real issue, right? It involves staffing, how many staff do we have for enforcement? Staff has said briefly, once this was on the agenda, boy, you know, if we start enforcing throughout the city, we're going to need more staff, right? Absolutely, sweeping the street reduces trash that goes into the storm drain and we can do a lot better job if the cars were moved on the west side. There's an impact to residents and a strong sentiments around that. This is a significant policy discussion that we should not step lightly in. And as your City Manager, I want to give you completed staff work and I want to make sure that when we step into a heavy policy discussion, we're doing it thoughtfully and I work with staff to give you the answers to some of the questions that I know you're going to ask when we have this conversation. And this is a heavy one. And so, you gave us a marker two months ago to work on a palette of things. Over, I think at this point, we have over 55 items on that list that we're working on. And if we add something new, it's actually hard to say this, that something else is going to either be delayed or dropped. And I think it is absolutely your right to say, you know what, this is an important issue, it's come up, we're going to change the marker. You talked about two things. You talked about scheduling the study session and doing the work that is involved in that and you've also talked about having staff pull up staff reports from years ago and provide those to the city council. What I can tell you, not even having seen those, is that they need to be refreshed, right? They were done for a specific purpose or at a specific time and you guys are going to have questions that that staff report from 2011 or that PowerPoint from a couple of years ago just isn't going to hit. And so, it's going to be a bit of staff work to do it. And I think if council wants to say, you know what, this is important, City Manager, go back, tell us how much time it's going to take to do this and do it right and we'll make that decision. I'll go back and we'll put together an estimate of time and an estimate of what has to come off the plate or what will be delayed because now we're taking on this project. We could wait till the six-month mark and see what progress we've made on the things that you said were critically important and rebalance at that time. You could also wait until the October, towards the middle to end of October, when we give you your first quarterly staff report on your approved initiatives and see where we are with those. I can tell you now, with COVID and everything, we're delayed, right? We've been doing a lot over these last couple of months. Or we can, we could also pull together those staff reports and just send them to you for your review. They may tell you a little bit of what is, but I think we all know what is. I think the question you're really trying to answer is do we change that? And what are the implications of changing that? People, money, impact the community, you know, by doing a better job sweeping the streets, by making the cars move, how much less trash will go into the storm drains? How much further would that get us to our trash reduction goals from the Regional Water Quality Board? You know, is the cost of doing this, not just money, but potentially negative community sentiment, worth it because the benefits outweigh the cost? You're going to have those questions and I think as a professional and as staff, it's our duty to give you those answers. And it's not a, someone pull up reports from a few years ago and provide it to you. It's a significant amount of work and then it's a significant policy discussion. And so, I really want to toss it back to you as elected leaders and as the policymakers to say, does this meet that marker? Because we talked about this before, this was on the list and it didn't make priority. What has changed that now brings it to the forefront and do you want us to launch into the work? Or do you want to know what it is or what comes off the list, if that happens?
City Manager's posed a question and I do see we have a member of the community who has their hand up. If we can bring her in, please, and then we'll bring her back to council to answer his question.
Okay, first we have Maria Concha. Just one moment. Hi, Maria, can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready, thank you. I think one thing that's lost in this whole conversation, and it's something that has been brought up to our attention too, is that we on the east side are getting fined when we don't move our cars, but people on the west side aren't having that happen. And something's not right. I mean, and from what we're hearing, because I've been on the discussions, on the threads, on Facebook and on X store, and people are saying, well, we see the street sweepers go around the cars and everything's fine and everything's great. Well, you've got to move your car out of here or you're going to get a $60 ticket. And people were just appalled by that. And I was too, when you got your first ticket. And then with COVID coming in, we suspended everything, yeah, everything was great. Streets weren't that bad, but now it's like we're back to moving cars again. And at this point in time, I don't know about anybody else, but my hours were cut at work and $60 might not be a lot, but it's still $60 if you go someplace else. And there are other people in this neighborhood that I know feel the exact same way. And we've got construction and our streets look like crap and it seems like everything's happening on the west side and nothing's happening on the east side. And we're like the redheaded septuagint, and I know I bring this up a lot, but it's true. We feel like we're neglected, that nobody pays attention to what's going on here and nobody walks around. I've seen, some of the council members have been here and I appreciate that, believe me. But when you don't know what you're living through, like we are right now, not right. So, maybe, just maybe, we either fine everybody the same way or we stop it altogether. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Tom Hamilton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. So, the, it's, I'm really seeing this as an equity issue between the west and the east. I live on the west side. The street sweeper comes by my house every other Thursday twice a month, you know, on schedule, and drives right down the middle of the street because, you know, most of the spots are taken, especially now. But even during, even during, before COVID, this go down the middle of the street and it really didn't serve any purpose. And it really, it seems like, it seems like a no-brainer. If you're not going to tick it, then don't sweep. And it's as simple as that. You know, there are areas where we need to sweep and we need to keep those drains clean in order to prevent, to prevent possible flooding and it just, it just, it just does not make a lot of sense to sweep in neighborhoods where you're not going to, you know, do the full job and enforce it. So, that's my, that's my thought on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
We have Marco Dorato. Hi, Marco, I'm trying to unmute you.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I've been following this issue closely for a couple of years now, being a resident here in the avenues. And I'm really concerned just about the optics of enforcement on the east side as opposed to lack of enforcement on the west side or other parts of town. The optics are pretty bad. I think in discussions in community and social media and different message boards, I think folks are not willing to understand or accept the fact that enforcement is not uniform across the city. And I want to be clear, I'm not asking for the street sweepers to stop doing their job on the east side. I know it's needed to prevent flooding and other issues. I'm also not asking for the enforcement to stop, I'm just asking for it to be uniform. And I respect the City Manager's perspective about being a larger policy issue and I think that conversation needs to be had and it needs to be prioritized and fit along with the other priority issues that the council has established earlier. But the optics are pretty bad. And I also know for specific and personal experience that even when folks, for example, are working from home and the battery has died and they can't get the car jumped quick enough by AAA, that even notes on the windshield do not save them a ticket. So, I think the enforcement needs to be, needs to be uniform, it needs to be reasonable and we just really need to address the optics. I think we're not addressing those issues and we're not ahead of them. As folks know here and in the community, then discussion runs rampant and people make up scenarios and make up narratives. So, enforcement should be uniform, I think it should be addressed and I appreciate Councilmember Medina for bringing this forward for consideration and possibly a study session. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next we have Stephen Seymour.
Okay, Melissa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I want to follow, and also thank Marty for bringing this up. I also want to thank Maria and Tom and Marco for speaking to this issue. I see this the same way, this is an equity issue. You look at the people on the east side and by and large, you know, their incomes aren't what those on the west side have. And yet, these are the people that may wake up late one day and end up with a $60 ticket on their windshield. I believe that our streets need to be cleaned and like one or more of the speakers said, I'm not asking for the street cleaning to stop. We've got a problem with cleanliness of our streets throughout this city, so we can't afford to give it up. But on the other hand, I have stood up in, say, the Cressmore neighborhood or other neighborhoods and been talking with residents there and watched the street sweeper drive right down the middle of the block. So, we've got a couple of issues here. We've got an equity issue and we also have an issue on how this impacts people financially. But I look at this from another perspective as well. We've got a city asset and we've got an employee who's driving down the middle of the street and if we're not going to ask those cars to move so that that employee can do their full job, then maybe we, maybe there's a job that isn't being done right now and we can reallocate that employee and that asset or that employee to another area of our city that needs help. So, again, I want to thank Councilmember Medina for bringing this up. This is something that I've now been listening to people for more than five years talk about it and it's, we really need to do something about it. We've got to decide how we deal with this because the optics are bad, as Marco said. Sandra wants to speak as well, so you can quit my time and reset the clock for her if you like.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So, what I wanted to add to this conversation was also some preventative measures from getting litter on the street to begin with. I mean, hopefully, a lot of residents would take care not to continue throwing masks and their plastic gloves and their plastic bottles. If we can get that message out, that maybe a lot of that stops and we don't have to have the street sweeping out there. And another major role that at least an area comes into play is the garbage gets put out and people overfill those garbage cans. And those garbage cans get either knocked over or the crows pull things out. But I'm wondering if we can work with recollaging. There are other cities whose garbage cans and recycling business have a snap on them, so they stay closed until the garbage man come along and open them. They wouldn't be easily opened by, say, a bird. So, I think we need to address those issues as well, not just after the garbage arrived there, but it definitely is an equity issue. I'm the street cleaner here, like during COVID, when cars weren't moving, I continued cleaning the streets. But I think a lot of people might not move their cars off and if we don't have the street cleaning, I don't know, but we need to treat both parts of the city equally. I think that's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Tim O'Brien. Hi, it's actually Raina. I am so glad that this topic is, we're discussing about this topic and I also agree that we have a problem in San Bruno. I don't understand when was it decided that the east side was going to be cited for not moving the vehicles, but the west side, basically, the sweeper just goes around the vehicles. I don't know, how long has it been? We've been here six years and it's been that long and it seems like that is unfair. Why is it that the west side gets treated better than the east side? And I too, I agree with Sandra that basically something needs to be done with the way the garbage cans get overfilled and maybe educating the community will be one, because I too pick up the garbage wherever I go. But let's have a discussion because I don't think it's fair that the east side is treated like a second-class citizen. So, it is time, I'm glad that all the speakers have brought up this issue and it's time for basically, for the community, for the east side to be heard. We need, we are one city, not the We need, we we are one city, not the west side or the east side. We are San Bruno, the city of San Bruno. So let's treat all of us like equally. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Wait, one more, one more speaker, uh please.
Terry Chavez. Just one moment, Terry. Terry, it's not allowing me to have you. You have to come in as a participant to speak. Says you're using an older version of Zoom. I'm trying to unmute you.
Okay, there. Can you hear me, Melissa?
Yes.
Sorry, I apologize. Um, thank you for taking my comment. I just have a few words to say. I wanted to say I appreciate what all the prior comments, all the prior community members had stated. I want to mention that I live on the west side of El Camino and I've lived here since two thousand and nine. I didn't know that other residents within our great city of San Bruno are receiving tickets during the street cleaning because no one in my name, in my neighborhood receives tickets and none of my neighbors know either. So I just I just want to um state that we it's not, it shouldn't be east versus west. We're all one community and Raina, Raina, thank you for mentioning, we are all one community. We really need to stand together. I just want to reiterate that a lot of my neighbors are were clueless as to who's receiving parking tickets. We didn't know at all until we saw some Facebook posts that we have other community members in other in other neighborhoods receiving parking tickets for street cleaning. And although we're not receiving any parking tickets for the street cleaning, we don't think that it's fair that some of our fellow community members are receiving parking tickets when other other um neighborhoods are not. But I just want to make sure everyone knows that most of the city, well, on the west side, there are pockets of the city that have no clue that other parts of the city are receiving um tickets during the street cleaning until we read the comments on Facebook. Um, thank, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Rico, you're muted. There we go. Sorry. Um a lot of questions, comments were brought up. Uh like to go to the city manager. You wanted to uh address her comment quickly on that before we bring it back to the council.
Sure, Mayor, uh I sure, I'll do that. Um, like I said before, I I think this is a very, very legitimate policy discussion. Uh the question for the city council uh is is when um and to uh put some of your other priorities uh down to have this or 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 plan it out later. What I what I guess what I could say from the public comments is that that's just a taste of um the significant issues that surround this. You know, there were, there were a number of things that that were mentioned. One thing was, well, if you're just going down the middle of the street, stop sweeping. Um, I I can tell you that even in some of the neighborhoods where they do go down the middle of the street, there's significant trash that is diverted from the storm drain. And so it is still beneficial to do that. And by not doing that, you actually will have more trash going in to the storm drain. And all you have to do is see um how much debris is uh in the sweeper at the end of the day. And there are also parts of of San Bruno where um on the west side where tickets are not given, but there are cars that are moved and the sweep, the street sweeper is zigzagging and picking up significant trash. Um I would also say to the comments that were raised um about uh potentially stopping ticking, the industry standard for um trash diversion is to actually require the cars to move. And the way you require the cars to move is to have a fine schedule and ticket them if they don't move. And so uh we sort of have an issue that's wrapped in equity because um there's a a there was a policy decision that was put in place to uh issue tickets on the west, on the east side, but not on the west side. But the industry standard is really moving toward ticketing uh and forcing the cars to move because then you have the greatest diversion uh uh in your stormwater. Uh and I will say, in a city like San Bruno that has hills, that's windy, um you you're gonna have a lot of leaves and things clogging up your storm drains if you're not out there sweeping. And so the answer is really to 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 not sweep. But the question is, do we do a better job at sweeping by requiring cars to move? Um and what I would tell you also is, the next time this is on your agenda, whether it's us coming back with more with uh the reports from a few years ago or a study session, there will be robust community engagement and sentiments from uh multiple sides of the community. And again, my rec- my my recommendation is, you walk into that thoughtfully and you allow staff uh to do the background work, to to give you answers to the questions that we know you're you're gonna want to ask and the questions that that you're gonna um want answered to and and some of the analysis that you're gonna want. For example, um ticket revenue, if you start ticketing on the west side, may be robust initially, but once people start getting tickets uh and they have more places to park, you're likely not gonna get that revenue. And so the it may be a a cost to start issuing uh tickets on the west side and have staff and and have to bring on the staff to do that in the long run. And so we want to put that analysis together for you. And uh if we're gonna have this policy discussion, uh again, my my recommendation is um, you know, let's calendar it and let's uh let's allow staff uh time uh to put together the information for you.
Okay, uh and council, I'll start calling on the hands that I see up for the council. And let's just uh um, once you're called upon, let's get everything out and then uh we'll just make sure we can talk to everybody who wishes to speak. Uh first is Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just want to say I support um uh the city manager's recommendation to let council, to let the staff go ahead and analyze this. I wasn't sure if it was clear whether that's now or in the future. I do think, though, given that we're in the middle of COVID, that we're encouraging people to stay at home, there's still a shelter-in-place order. Um this is impacting people more today than maybe it was eleven months ago. And I I do acknowledge that staff is at capacity. I hear that. Um I also heard more people speak tonight on this subject at ten thirty at night than we've seen in a meeting in probably five months. And so maybe even longer. So I think, given um that this isn't a new issue and given that we're really, from what I gather, just asking for information on what the process is now. We're not even saying that we need to change it, but what is the process? Um and then we could hear during public comment, like any other meeting, from the public. Um and then maybe provide some recommendations at that time or at a later time. But for me, I just really do want to know, what is the process? What are our policies and what is actually happening day to day on our streets? Um, thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Um, I just can't support anything at this time other than the construction uh process where it sounds like City Manager Javon is already moving forward or something like that. Until we can assess all of our priorities and determine how we put this to on the plate of staff. And City Manager Vaughn Grogan, I want to thank you for your honest feedback because, you know, I think that nobody heard what he just said. And that is, we just continue to add and add and add the items to this plate. Where is the breaking point, folks? You know, it it is, this is just another item to add? Because here's my item I'd like to add, let's focus on utility costs. How are we gonna get to lower utility costs? How do people afford to pay their utility costs? Did you see your water bill recently? That's a big issue. What about offering some sort of discount? PG&E just came out with uh FERA, it's a utility discount at eighteen percent for electricity. Let's focus on those bigger pictures to address all our community and how we can get through this COVID. Because there's some serious people who can't afford to pay their rent, can't afford their utility costs. Let's get staff to work on that and then figure out how we're gonna pay. Our our costs are continuing to increase in many different areas. Again, I just can't report something without having the full picture. I'm not, I'm not doing my job right and we're not either. So anybody to say, yes, this is a great idea because you're looking at one item without looking at the fifty items to figure out what's the priority, isn't doing this, the the residents of this community the justice that you agreed to as a council member to move forward? And to think that staff can just pull an item, a report, Mayor Medina, out of the archives from two thousand and eleven or two thousand and ten is, again, staff's time. Let's be fair, folks. Let's be real. Let's give them the opportunity to work on what they're working on. Let's come back with a priority list and then say, do you want to add this item on there? And staff's gonna say, we can't add anymore. Because I can guarantee to you, I can already feel them sinking as we speak. Then figure out what we can take away. And I'm okay with taking other things away as long as we're all in agreement on what we're gonna add to it and what we're gonna take away. But just just having this one item come forward, it doesn't, it's not fair.
Councilmember Medina. You're muted, Marty.
It's Medina's turn. Um, I'm fine with the city managers uh calendaring this this topic and and bringing back um the progress made on other topics. And and at that point, we could shuffle it around a little bit. Um, the intent of my uh effort to to have a study session, study session was to bring up subject and it and and I already talked about that and and we and I think we're ready to go forward. I I don't appreciate a lecture, though, uh Council uh Member Davis. I mean, we all get to decide what we're gonna do with our voice and who we who we represent. So I I I'm pushing back on that. That's not necessary. I've been here plenty of time to to know what my my role is and I don't need anybody telling me otherwise. So let's chill out. Um, I'm I'm okay with the city manager's proposal and we'll go from there. Thank you.
By the way, I'm sorry, it wasn't directed towards you, Councilmember Medina. It it, I just can sit here every meeting and it's the same thing after another. We just continue to bring on to staff and it's, I'm sorry, I I'm passionate because maybe the difference is is every single day I work in a utility business that deals with COVID. And every single day, there's one crisis after another and I feel the pain. So I feel like I'm a staff member on this Zoom meeting today, feeling the pain that I suffered through every single day. And then you throw in fires and then you throw in other things that happen in your city. And it's challenging. It really is. And I think that everybody is 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 tired. You know, our meetings go until midnight at night and staff's been there since eight o'clock this morning. So I guess I'm passionate for them. I guess I feel for them. I feel like we just continue to ask and ask. And I I it's it's hurtful. It's it's hard for me to 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 go through it. I mean, it's and I and I apologize for being so passionate. If I was rooted anyway, I definitely apologize for that. Wasn't my intention. I was not directing my comment to you. But I think the mayor knows the history and I think that he knows that a study session is not simple. It takes a lot of staff on. And this is a volatile item that will bring out everybody that's never showed up to a council meeting before and speak on this behalf. And do I agree it should never be about this side or that side? It's not about that issue. I agree that we should never have a home flood and I agree that we should have to worry about getting a ticket because I forgot to move my car. I just paid for a ticket a couple of weeks ago because a car was parked the wrong direction. And the neighbor just paid around the corner for a ticket because they pulled up to jump their their daughter's car and got a ticket because their car was parked the wrong direction. So it's happening on the west side. Don't don't think that the tickets aren't happening. But I just feel like we have to think about what we're going through. This is evolving COVID. We don't know if next week, there's a whole new regulation, a whole new thing, and there's staff jumping through more hoops. And so just, that's that's where it's coming from. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh I'm fine with the city manager's recommendation for myself. Anybody else? Vice Mayor Salazar.
I feel like there's a little bit of misinterpretation uh because I I heard the city manager say something and and then I'm hearing other people saying, I support what he said, but I think going in a different direction. So what I I heard the city manager say is that we should wait until, or he's he's recommending that we wait until we get at least to the point where we have a normal checkpoint and then figure out if this needs to be uh shuffled into the deck. And so if that's what everybody is concurring to, then I'm in favor of revisiting this at that point, uh that next checkpoint, but not um doing anything uh before then. And I I agree, it's an important topic and I I do want to see it discussed. And uh but I just, you know, a- after hearing the the city manager concur with a lot of the concerns I had, I I have to say that uh it it would be appropriate to wait.
City managers, wanted to clarify that we're all on the same page?
Yes, uh so uh for clarity, my my recommendation was to wait for that normal checkpoint, which again is the six-month mark, um which uh you will have that report uh during the month of January. In January twenty twenty-one. So you guys approved these strategic initiatives uh to in June and we are now two months into the first quarter, July, August. And so September will make the first quarter. We will report out on that in October. Um and then the the second quarter will be uh October, November, December, and we will report out on that in January. And the plan was to give you a written status report at the uh first quarter mark and have a larger discussion in January about where we are on meeting those uh initiatives. Remember, a number of them um are multi-year, some of them, uh I think all of them in general require interdepartmental teams uh to execute. And six months was enough enough time to make some real progress on them. Uh and then that January conversation was also meant to help to lead into our budget conversation as well for the following year. And so it's a quarterly update with a six-month uh hard check-in.
Okay, everybody understand? I see nod. Yes, yes. Okay, all right. All right, thank you for clarifying it so that we're we'll leave this topic all on the same page. Thank you, City Manager. Okay, uh we're still under uh council comments. Um and Mr. Medina, was there anything else for you, sir?
Yes, as a matter of fact, this is really short. Wanted to remind the community out there that um the San Bruno Community Foundation is uh gonna have a grant workshop. This is an opportunity for community groups to apply for grants to twenty-five thousand to support new or existing programs that benefit the San Bruno community. For more information, uh go to sbcf.org. You also may call six five zero seven six three zero seven seven five. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I I just wanted, sorry, I didn't know we had switched topics. I just wanted to say, just for the record, that um I I understand and I'm hearing what staff is saying, but I still do think that six, I mean, waiting till January for something that's impacting people every day, I think, is a long time. And I'd be happy to um work with the city manager to to actually exchange one of my priority items and wait until next year uh for this item. And so um I just want to throw that out there. I just looked at my strategic initiatives and my three items. Um and I think one of them I can, one of them can wait. It's not gonna be done this year anyway. So I'd be happy to switch it out if that means that this one would get some priority. Because again, I want to reiterate that it's really asking the question of what we're doing now as opposed to how we can improve it or how we can change it. Um, so I'll I'll leave, I'll leave it at that. Uh if someone wants to make further comment. Um, and then I just wanted to, just a couple of things since our last meeting. I just really wanted to thank um the city manager, Grogan, because I'm so happy to see Florida Park um coming to fruition. And even though it's not our end game, um I feel like at least we're in the game where there's some. there's some grass, and it's finally not a white to the neighborhood after about seven years. And I'm just so happy to see something happening, and I think if it wasn't for you moving, I think, quickly, and actually acknowledging that people have to look at the dirt every single day they wake up, I, I think it probably would be the same right now. So, I want to extend my gratitude for that. I also wanted to make sure I thanked staff, especially Jennifer, who, city manager Grogan brought this up earlier, but she did step in at the very end of our labor negotiations. And I think it was a, kind of a really tough negotiation, from what I saw and from my own experience, walking into a $4 million deficit and COVID happening, and I just think that it was a, we were in a really tough position. But I also want to thank our union partners for working with us, and all of our staff. I think it's really important that we acknowledge that you're definitely appreciated, and I know that I asked for a lot, but I think it's important that everybody be working to move our city forward. And as I said to our directors when we first met, we all have to be agile at this time. I too am going to work, I too am working full-time in this international pandemic, and it's difficult, but we will get through it, and we'll do it together. I wanted to thank the woman who spoke earlier on the miniature golf course, throw that out for any tan fran developers, maybe some indoor miniature golf would be a, a great idea, I hadn't even thought of that. And I just wanted to also say that for the move drive-in, somebody brought up, I still love that idea, and someone brought up to me today, and I wanted to say it, so one of the public commenters actually, earlier today, contacted me and said, what about whether we could partner with any of the schools? Because they have the big parking lots, or the town center, or some location that already has a parking lot where COVID wouldn't be as much of an issue, because you can still stay in your cars. So, just throwing that out there, because it came to my attention today. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments? From the other two? Okay. So, I'll go ahead and finalize this. Obviously, there are three things that I'd like to adjourn the meeting in. One is acknowledging September 11th, which is a few days from now. Also, there was, last Friday, I happened to be at the city park and saw a gathering over by the rec center, and went over to, to look, and found out that it was a poor young lady who, she was only 23, passed away. Shelby Childress, if I said correctly, I hope. Childress, sorry. And she worked at the rec. She had volunteered and worked at the recreation center for 10 years. She was a recreation leader, she dealt with the after-school sports pro- school programs, she dealt with all the camps year-round, and I had an opportunity to talk to her brother and her mother, who obviously had just been about a week, and were grieving, but the young folks came together to offer their respect and love to one another. And I did tell her mother that I would be acknowledging her with her permission tonight, for someone who has been known as the nice person, always smiling, laughing, kind, and has a good soul. So, I wanted to also acknowledge her, and I think I can speak on behalf of the council, our heartfelt sympathy and thoughts and prayers are with her family. And finally, of course, tomorrow, almost here, is obviously 10 years that we had a devastation and tragedy that we were, we talked about earlier. So, what I would like to do also, for those on an 11, for Shelby, and for those in remembrance, as you can see below the names of those eight that were lost, that we adjourn in silence for all of those. We'll go ahead and adjourn this to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on September 22nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM. All, be, be healthy, be safe, and have a good night.